Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the April 30th, 2019 Regular Meeting of the Board of Education. I'm Kate Borninski, and I'd like to welcome everyone tonight, and also, I would like to welcome my fellow board members and ask them to introduce themselves, starting on my left.
Hi, I'm John Lazarowitz. Good evening.
Leonardo Savage, thank you for coming.
Patty McCoyn, thank you for being here tonight.
Patrick Keough, thanks for coming tonight.
Good evening, I'm Anupan Chuksedu, thanks for being here.
Doug Brooks, thanks for coming out tonight.
Ms. Merritt, would you like to introduce your staff?
Yes, good evening and welcome. I'd like to begin by introducing my assistant, Ms. Elizabeth Adams, and we thank Elizabeth for her support each and every meeting, making sure she captures our minutes for us. Also, we want to thank Charlie Jones, he's our man behind the scenes who tapes our videos so that people that are not able to be here can enjoy and understand the information that we're discussing at our board meetings. I'd like to ask the remaining staff to introduce themselves to you, beginning with Mr. Brandon.
Good evening, friends and colleagues, Nick Brandon, Executive Director, Communications and Marketing, welcome.
Good evening, welcome, everyone. Liz Vartanian Gibbs, Human Resources.
Good evening, Kurt Tiskowitz, Executive Director, Student Services.
Hello, Mike Bender, Chief Academic Officer.
Good evening, Heather Colombo, President, Education Association.
Would everyone please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Crying) Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on our agenda is the Consent Agenda, Adoption of the Agenda, Approval of the Consent Agenda. I'm looking for a motion on Action Item 190473.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for the adoption of the Agenda, Action Item 190473.
Second. Okay, motion was made by Member Lazarowitz, and seconded by a Member Sidhu. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing now Ms. Merritt, would you like to take us through the Consent Agenda, please?
Yes, thank you, President Borninski. Our Consent Agenda this evening consists of Human Resources transactions. Since our last time together, we are still hiring champions, and we have a new hire for your consideration this evening. We have retirements and resignations. We have the approval of minutes from the regular meeting, that was on April the 16th, 2019, and we have the second reading of the following policies. 1422, Non-Discrimination and Equal Employment Opportunity. Policies 3122 to 4122, Non-Discrimination and Employment Opportunity. Policy 4162, Controlled Substance Alcohol Policy. Policy 5330, that's the use of medications. Policy 5517.02, Sexual Violence. And Policy 8210, School Calendar.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0.
Good evening, everyone. I would first like to welcome a new teacher to Plymouth Canton Community Schools, Erin Short. Come on up, Erin. Hi, Erin. So Erin is actually returning to Plymouth Canton Community Schools. She worked in our district previously for nine years, and also, she worked for two years in Pennsylvania. She holds a Bachelor's Degree and a Master's Degree from West Virginia University, and she will be starting as a Resource Room Teacher at Byrd Elementary School, so welcome.
Thank you. I didn't know where I was supposed to go.
So Erin, you're very fortunate, you have so many of your teaching colleagues in the room with you tonight to welcome you. So we are happy that you've returned to Plymouth Canton Community Schools, and if you could come around, we'd like to congratulate you.
Oh, okay. Well, tell me where I'm going. Thank you. Thank you. Welcome back. Thank you. Hi, Erin. You're welcome. Congratulations. Congrats. Welcome.
Next, I would like to recognize some phenomenal educators who have decided to retire at the end of the school year. So first, I would like to recognize Donald Glass. If any of them are here this evening, please stand up. But Donald Glass has worked in our district for 32 years, and he will be leaving East Middle School at the end of the school year. Thank you for your service, Donald. Bonnie Goodrich currently is a Literacy Interventionist at Dodson Elementary School. She'll be retiring after 33 years. Dawn Parker is an elementary teacher at Hoben School, and she's retiring after 33.38 years. We must have hired her like on December 1st in 1986, so that's the year she started. Candace Simmons, Speech Pathologist at Bentley School, retiring after 16 years of service. And Diane Stadler from the Early Childhood Department, retiring after 28 years of service. So thank you so much for your service to our district, our students, our staff, everyone, and congratulations, we wish you well on your retirement.
So I just wanted to say, if I add it correctly, it's over 100 years of service, and that's just amazing, and I wish everyone retiring well, and wanted to give a special shout-out to Bonnie Goodrich because my children went through Dodson, and she touched the lives of every child at Dodson, and still touching their lives until the end of the year. But just thank you, Bonnie, for everything. And with that, now we are at Letter B, Celebrating Success, everybody's favorite, hopefully. Tonight, our presenter is Member Savage, and he is presenting... What, did I skip something? Sorry?
Yes, we did. Yeah. We did. Yeah, we did. We did that first. Sorry. So yes, we're good.
So Member Savage will be presenting an award to Kane Pryor, Starkweather Student.
Good evening, everybody. Celebrating success this evening, we'll honor Starkweather Student Kane Pryor. We're also joined tonight, well, we were going to be joined tonight by Starkweather Teacher Regina Wilburn, but Nick is going to take over on that side. Regina, together with Nick Brandon, Executive Director of Communications and Marketing, nominated Kane for this honor tonight. We ask that Kane come up to the podium at this time. Kane led a group of fellow students with an initiative to build a skate park in Canton Township. After researching the topic and constructing the presentation, Kane and his team presented to the Canton Township Board on March the 26th. Presentation was very well-received and led to a good discussion, and Canton Township Supervisor Pat Williams said, "These students certainly made an excellent presentation. They hit on the positive aspects of the mental and physical health impacts of skateboarding." The Canton Township Leisure Services Department agreed to investigate potential locations and funding opportunities. Supervisor Williams concluded by saying of Kane and his team, "This is not an overnight thing, but they certainly did get the ball rocking, if not rolling." Kane, please share a few words about the work you have on the skate park and the presentation you made to the township for the board.
Hello, my name is Kane Pryor. Thank you for having me here tonight. So I've been skateboarding pretty much most of my life, you know, and it's big, one of my biggest passions. I love skateboarding, it does a lot for me. It's one of my biggest like things, like outlet, you know, positive outlet for like some of the things that I go through in my life, and just skateboarding is something that I want others to experience, you know, and it's hard for others to experience it when there's not a park in the community for them to use, you know? And I always have to go to Westland, or Livonia, or Farmington Hills, to another park to skate, you know, and I wish there was just a place in my own community for kids to learn how to skate and experience what I get to experience all the time, you know?
Thank you. Thank you, Karen. On behalf of Ms. Wilburn, I think Nick is going to say a few words.
So Ms. Wilburn couldn't make it tonight. She's obviously incredibly proud of Kane, as we all are, and she wanted to share with the board that this was part of the Jobs for Michigan Graduates Capstone Project, so jobs for Michigan graduate students were assigned this project. The level of student commitment to their project has been a revelation to Regina. All standards for Jobs for Michigan Graduates in the state were easily achieved. Through this project, Kane met with Senator Polhanke, Representative Colizar, and Canton Township Supervisor Pat Williams. The main premise behind the Capstone Project is to teach soft skills in addition to learning what it means to be a professional, and Kane certainly did that. Regina says that Kane is a great example of the success of the JMG program, and we're all very proud of him. Good job, Kane.
Congratulations, Kane, for this recognition. On behalf of the PCCS Board of Education, I would like to present you, Kane Pryor, with the SARS Award for Students with Tenacity Achieving and Reaching Success.
Thank you so much.
Congratulations.
Congratulations. What a great idea. Thank you. 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 Good luck. Thank you.
Report. On April 17th, I had the pleasure of going to Around Our World at Field Elementary School. It was a very awesome event, and I was really happy to see a bunch of different performances that the students did, and then also, they had exhibits on all the different countries that the students there are from. It was just amazing, and really well-done. And then, on this past Saturday, I went to the Canton Youth Advisory Peace Walk at Heritage Park, and I understand that some of the students from our park participated in the planning of that, and that was a really interesting and heartwarming event, so I was really glad to be there for that. Otherwise, that's about it for me. Next up is Student Performance and Achievement Committee, SPA, with Member Sidhu.
We've not had a meeting since our last board meeting, but I want to remind everyone of our upcoming meeting on Wednesday, May 8th, at 4:30 PM in this room. Please join us if you can.
Okay, and next is the Policy Committee, with Member McCoyn.
So we actually had a meeting tonight, and then our next meeting is May 28th, at 5:30. They are down in the Superintendent's Conference Room, if anybody wants to be there. We've been pretty busy. We have completed work on the Student Suicide Policy and the Administrative Guidelines, and they should be coming to the board in May. And we've also pretty much gotten through our work with the naming, renaming of buildings work, which is pretty fast for the Policy Committee, and we still have quite a full agenda for every month, so feel free to show up, it's a lot of fun.
Thank you. And last but not least is Finance and Operations, Member Keough.
Finance and Operations has not met since our last school board meeting, but our next meeting is Thursday, May 23rd, 4:30 PM in this room. It is the coolest committee, and I really encourage everybody to come and hear about all the awesome things that we're doing from a finance perspective, the capital improvement programs, we'll get a preview of the budget, it's going to be a great time. Please join us.
Thank you. So next is Citizens' Comments. I have about, I think, 13 cards here. If you wish to speak and you did not fill out a card, please do so, and give it to Mr. Brandon, he'll get it to me. The way it works is each person who wishes to speak gets three minutes, and Mr. Brandon will be timing, and you can see the clock up there. Some of these were numbered, so I'm hoping that I have them in the correct number, because I have ones and twos with circles and ones and twos without circles, so I'm assuming all the circled ones went together. So first is Barbara Lehman.
That's a little high. Thank you. Good evening. Allow me to introduce myself. I am a proud Ispiter Bumblebee, an East Rocket, and a Salem Rock. After completing most of my college education, I returned to be a field eagle for student teaching, and then hired in the district in 1990. I continued as a pioneer panther, a west bulldog, and central charger before becoming a Canton Chief for the last 20 years. I share these schools with you now to know my passion and dedication to this district. I am Barb Hanisch Lehman. I was hired in a time when very few were being hired, but we continue to grow and hire more amazing and talented teachers. I was teaching alongside those that had 28, 23, and 6 years of experience to my one. I grew to be a great teacher, and even more proud of my current career as a high school counselor. I learned from some of the best teachers in the state. This was the district to be hired into. Today, I cannot be as confident, because who teaches in my building, but not because of who teaches in my building, but more about those who have left this profession, and those that are applying to leave just now. This district has a past of great financial responsibility, but what does that mean exactly? Is it to allow class sizes to go above 30s and close to 40s? Is it on the backs of cutting supportive classes for our students and the turn support, the amazing efforts that our teachers put forth? Is it on having counselor caseloads 30%, 30% higher than what our district contract recommends, yet every discussion and hot topic is our students' mental health? I was very fortunate to be hired at a time when buying years were strongly encouraged by my coworkers, who I'm forever thankful that they pushed me to do so. I was also fortunate to buy a home in a community that I work, so that the commute after a late tennis match was close by. That was possible while coaching two sports for 25-plus years, working summer school, and now giving tennis lessons to those who want to learn. Currently, our teachers are at a pay rate that needs to be corrected, with a step one that has not increased since 2006. It needs to be respected. We have added positions to support our administrative teams, intern the students, now is the time for the teachers. Yes, I am at the top of the salary. Everyone should have that option. This decision is not just for money to them now, it is what establishes their future and their retirement. We want them to have the support. When I got out of college, I was offered four, excuse me, I was offered positions in four districts, and to me, there was no deciding. This is the district that I chose. This is the district that at the time stood above the rest. We must begin to move back up that ladder. I had hoped tonight to be excited to share that our district heard the cries of our counseling department and students, that it was determined that we would hire finally a sixth counselor in each building, moving to the seven we had before Plymouth was even built. We have opened an entire large Division One high school and more programs, but only added one counselor, where five are doing the work of seven. Just over a year ago, you, you awarded us, the counselors in the district, the extra miler award. You spoke about our commitment to our students, our staff, and the district. You spoke about the programs that we did for our students, and how important our job was, and how valued we are. What happened? Is our job really about scheduling and paper?
Can you please wind up? Can you please wind up? Thank you.
Sure. It is about there to support and listen to our students. To have the time to talk to them about their goals and their dreams, and to guide them down a path, at least that is what we were taught in our master's program. Many times, we ask the students what they need, and they need more time with us. Yet, we are not part of the budget, nor did we make the cut in fighting for the extra million. As we approach another year with numbers close to 450 students, we struggle to maintain and support our students, let alone staff or each other enough, not what is even close to acceptable, excuse me, by every statistic on mental health and well-being. Supported counselors mean supports...
Would you like to leave the rest of that for us to read?
I have two sentences. Supported counselors mean supportive students and staff, and supported teachers and staff mean successful students. Thank you.
Vicky?
No, Lisa.
My name is Lisa Wysocki. This is my 14th year teaching in the district. I teach at Field Elementary. Three years ago in January, I came and spoke to a board, looked very different than today, so about how the previous contract had impacted me. To prepare for tonight, I decided to kind of look back at that, at some of my talking points, and unfortunately, the impact isn't very different. So I'm going to share some information that relates to me. Three years ago, I was, it was my 11th year, I was on Step 8. Today, I'm in my 14th year, I'm on Step 11. What hasn't changed in the last three years is that there are still 14 steps to make it to the top, and it's going to take me 17 years before I'm there. If you average my pay increases over the last nine years, I'm averaging $1,491 a month. I mean, a year. I pay $598 a month in student loan debt. That's 15% of my net pay. In terms of benefits, three years ago, I also told the board how my benefits had suffered as well. I had a payment plan with Henry Ford for $50 a month, and a surgery center for $100 a month. Today, I have a payment plan with Henry Ford for $120 a month, and Beaumont for $60 a month. You may be wondering why a teacher needs a payment plan for health costs. We pay an additional 3% to the state for retirement healthcare, 7% for retirement, over $500 a year for this health insurance plan that has a $2,900 deductible. I call it the catastrophe insurance plan, because it's there if you need it, but it's expensive when you do. In terms of compensation, the district may think that it's paying me about $67 an hour, based on 30-hour work week. And while that may sound good, the reality is, I work over 60 hours a week, like most of my colleagues in here tonight. We put time into planning, prepping, grading, and teaching. So much of our work is behind the scenes and off the clock. This averages out to less than $31 an hour. If you're a new teacher in this district in your first year, you make about $17 an hour. So in closing, while I understand the state implemented laws regarding medical benefits, and it gave districts, they reaped the rewards financially, it doesn't make it right. In past contracts, our teachers gave up money to have those benefits that were just wiped out. So I know you can't do anything about the benefits because of the laws, but I know there's got to be creative ways to subsidize some of these losses that we've taken. In terms of steps, those are pay increases for experience. I should be paid for the 14 years of experience I have, not 11, as all of the teachers that got impacted by those freezes. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next is Vicky Wysocki.
My name is Vicky Wysocki, and I appreciate the opportunity to share my story with you. In 2004, I was a computer programmer, working part-time in the automotive industry, earning $60,000. I had a degree in mathematics and computer science, and honestly, had gone to college to become a math teacher. But at the time, teaching jobs were hard to come by, so I opted for a career in computer science. In the early 2000s, there were reports that there was a real need for math and science teachers, so after considering many factors, my husband and I agreed I should take the leap and go back to pursue a Master of Arts in Teaching. I knew I would initially take a significant pay cut, but I had every reason to expect that my salary would increase yearly, and that within a decade, I would be near the top of the pay scale. I was also able to balance the fact that I'd be taking quite a pay cut with the fact that, as a teacher, I'd be earning what was once considered a very good pension at retirement. Unfortunately, because of concessionary contracts, I never foresee myself reaching the top of the scale before I retire. I teach, if I teach for five more years and move up one step per year, I will still be a step and a half shy of the top, despite having taught for 17 years, and over my career will have earned over $62,000 less than the salary schedule I was given at hiring showed. Unfortunately, my pension will be based on these same earnings, resulting in a loss of more than $4,200 annually during my retirement. In 20 years, I will have lost $84,000. In 30 years, if I'm lucky enough to live that long, I will have lost $126,000 in pension earnings. To combat that, my husband and I are rethinking our retirement plans, including when we'll be able to afford to retire. My 24-year-old daughter is a pediatric nurse, and already earns as much as I do. That's a tough pill to swallow. Not that I begrudge her the salary she earns, because she works hard, all nurses do, but because I have a master's degree and have been teaching for 12 years, and just now have surpassed the salary I was earning working part-time in 2004. As I look back at my career change, I have to question whether that was a very misguided decision. Yes, I love what I do. I love working with kids, watching them grow, both mathematically and in so many other ways. I love the lightbulb moments, when a student finally understands a concept they've been struggling with. But has the sacrifice and salary been worth it? To be fair, no one knew that the funding for education was going to completely undermine the teaching profession, making it difficult for districts to honor contracts, and as a result, cause my income and that of my colleagues to stagnate. But now, you have the opportunity to undo much of the harm that has been done. The only way I foresee my situation improving is if the board sees fit to restore us to our rightful steps, as Detroit did for their teachers this year. My colleagues and I work exceedingly hard, and give up so much of ourselves to educate the children of this community, and I believe we deserve to be adequately compensated for our efforts. Thank you for listening. Supported teachers equals successful students.
Thank you. Next is Karina Badnar. Sorry if I didn't say that correctly.
Good evening. My name is Karina Badnar, and I'm a special education teacher at Workman Elementary. I have two children. My son is in third grade at Byrd, and my daughter will be entering kindergarten in the fall. I was initially hired as a long-term sub at Field Elementary, and then hired as Workman's first resource room teacher in August of 2006. But my history with PCCS actually started in 1972, more than a decade before I was born. That's the year my mother was hired at Salem High School to teach culinary arts. She taught in the district for over 30 years. She started the Salem Rock Cafe, which is the student-run restaurant at the park. Perhaps you've had the pleasure of eating there, as the successful program continues to thrive today under Diana Woodward. I started at West in 7th grade, and I graduated from Salem in 2001. I attended Michigan State University, and my goal never wavered. I wanted to return home to Plymouth to teach special education in my home district. My husband and I moved back to Plymouth in 2008. He's also a graduate of Salem High School, or class of 2000. He finished his medical degree from the University of Michigan, and currently practices medicine in Ann Arbor. I used to think our story was pretty unique. We went away to college, and then came back to the community where we were raised, and then I got a job in the very district where I had grown up and where my mother taught. But after 13 years of teaching here, and learning the background about my On one hand, it makes sense. Many of us have family in the area, so maybe that is the draw. But graduates returning to the area could always pick a neighboring district. I interviewed at several and had multiple job offers, some with better pay. Yet, when Jim Burke called to offer me the position at Workman, I accepted before he finished his sentence. I chose to work for Plymouth Canton so I could work in the same climate where I had experienced as a student. I wanted to work in a district with excellent teachers who had inspired me to grow out of my comfort zone. I wanted to raise my future children where the teachers were valued and where schools were the focal point of the community. When times were bad, PCCS teachers endured pay-scale freezes, higher out-of-pocket costs for benefits, and less staff and resources in our buildings. Because our real salaries and benefits have not kept pace with the cost of living, many have taken on second jobs. We've tightened our own budgets, put off vacations and home improvement projects, and struggled further to provide for our families. We've watched valued colleagues leave for better-paying jobs in other districts or leave the profession altogether. PCCS teachers are getting weary and frustrated, especially as the economy has improved, yet our pay and benefits lag behind. Our students have many and varied needs, but weary and frustrated teachers are not what those students need. They need supported teachers ready to provide high-quality education. They need the experience of teachers who stay in the district because they can make a living and provide for their families. They need a new generation of teachers to come back to their home district as I did and as so many of my colleagues have. They don't need a teacher who's exhausted after waiting tables the night before. They don't need experienced teachers leaving the profession. They don't need a constant wave of turnover as teachers leave the district. Our district needs to step up and get back to the teachers who have given up so much over the past decade, because after all, supported teachers equals successful students. Thank you.
Next is Valerie Levey.
Levy.
Levy, sorry.
All right. And I get timeouts in between if I start coughing. Fair enough. I get timeouts in between if I start coughing and I can't talk. Excuse me. Hello. My name is Valerie Levey, and I'm a science teacher at Canton High School. Over the last two years, you've heard from a host, or last two months, you've heard it from a host of teachers, hang on, my phone's being weird, teachers, secretaries, and parers about how they've been financially impacted over the last 10 years due to decisions made by the district. My story is not much different. I took a pay cut to come to PCCS, and decisions by the district to sporadically give steps we've earned cost me my house and forced me to declare bankruptcy. Last week, after teachers told their stories, including the large amounts of debt they had to take on and the financial sacrifices they had made, the response was, "The great news that the district has increased their credit rating." The problem was that this was done at the expense of the staff. But it's not just about money. Lack of respect shown to the staff at all levels have negatively impacted morale. I spent seven months busting my butt to earn 11 graduate credits in preparation to help in leading the charge for the new science standards, only to have my work ignored. Constant turnover in leadership, changing visions for science curriculum, and a lack of transparency in this process has frustrated me. The fact that the viewpoints of expert teachers on the front lines are being ignored is tiring and frustrating, such as the proposal to remove geophysical science when a full one-third of the new state standards are earth and space science. It doesn't make sense. I'm tired of being dictated to without recognition of the hard work being done. I'm tired of being told how to do my job when the people telling me what to do have never set foot in my classroom. I'm tired of having everyone else being listened to instead of the staff. I cannot emotionally take the lack of respect anymore. I cannot physically take the stress anymore. I cannot financially take the hits anymore. So, as of May 10th, I will be a former teacher at Canton High School. The disrespect, stress, and lack of financial support has caused me to not just leave PCCS, but has caused me to leave the teaching profession altogether. I've taken a job with less stress, fewer hours, and $14,000 more a year to start. You know what almost made me cry, the interview, when they asked me how I would make sure to take care of myself so that I could be the best at my job. I couldn't believe that someone cared about how I was doing. We're being told about the endless requirements and expectations, but who's taking a moment to check in and to show they care about the staff? I feel as if a weight has been lifted off my shoulders. I will miss my colleagues, and I will miss teaching the kids, but I can't take it anymore. And I'm not alone. Supported teachers equals successful students, but only if the teachers feel that they are valuable physically, emotionally, and financially.
My name is Kathy Stark, and I've been a teacher at the park for the past 17 years. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight. Like many of the teachers who have spoken before me, I love teaching and feel very blessed to be in this profession. Unfortunately, like those who have spoken before me, I have voted for and consequently have taken concessions. In fact, until a few weeks ago, I didn't realize how much I lost due to concessions because I truly didn't want to know. Like many teachers who transferred to the district with years of experience, I came in at step one. Teaching is one of the only professions where we don't honor experience. That said, this year alone, I'm down $9,000. Suffice it to say, I'm down tens of thousands of dollars where I thought I'd be when I started teaching, still waiting to reach the top of my pay scale. As you've heard many times before, this impacts not only my present, but my future financial world. Over the past decade, teachers have taken our lumps financially in pay, insurance, added school days, et cetera. Teachers remain an integral part of our schools. And in fact, in the PCCS promotional video on our website, teachers are promoted, are cited as excellent no less than 11 times, 11 times. You're reaching out to the community and prospective families, touting the greatness of your teachers. And we are great. I see why you do that. We are passionate, we're knowledgeable and caring, challenging and understanding. Our responsibilities are far greater than just educating. We are counselors and coaches, parent substitutes, competence, and security. As stated on the district website, its vision is quoted, "Plymouth Canton Community Schools will deliver an innovative educational experience which propels each student to excellence," end quote. How could this mission be fulfilled without an educated teacher base? Again, teachers are the foundation for this vision. Teachers have and are sacrificing to attain this vision. Yet, here we are speaking before you again because our voices are not being heard. According to Bridge Magazine, a nonpartisan, nonprofit news source, it evaluated 580 schools in the state of Michigan over the past three years. Salem, Plymouth, and Canton have scored places 5, 6, and 7 respectively. Teachers are a significant reason for this success. Why are we forced to appear before you to tout our worth? The great thing is, PCCS is in fantastic financial standing. The credit rating has recently increased. There is money in the budget to pay teachers. This shouldn't be an adversarial system. We all want what's best for students. We should be looking for ways to return some of the financial gains by the district to be given back to the teachers. The time is now to creatively think about the budget to find money to pay teachers. The time is now to repay some of the lost wages we have conceded. The time is now that we, to invest in teachers so we don't leave the profession. The time is now to prove to the community that you value and compensate the teachers you praise in your videos and on your district website. Supported teachers equals successful students.
Next is Julie Berner. Did I say it right?
You did. So, if I give you 20 bucks, will you give me an extra minute?
So, I am a parent in the district, not a teacher, and I'd like to share with you some of my experiences as a parent. So, during the time Allen was closing, I came before this board to try to save our school community. Reflecting back on that experience, I can tell you, I do not miss the building. I miss the teachers, the staff that came together to form an amazing community of advocates for my sons. I was fortunate that my oldest son started middle school after the closing and is now a freshman in high school. He has had an amazing group of teachers throughout his academic career so far. He's learning things his freshman year of high school that I did not learn until college. I am so grateful for him to continue to have these opportunities. Just a break for a minute. In his first year, he's been selected to be student of the month, has routinely scored in the top of his class in his biomed STEM class, which is a really hard class, and we received a lovely email from his history teacher regarding his exceptional performance on the fishbowl exercise in her class. I credit the amazing teachers he has had in his first nine years at PCCS, with setting him up for success in the competitive environment at the park, and the teachers at the park for continuing to encourage him with their positive remarks. My youngest son is still in elementary school and has some special needs that have required us to form a hard-working and caring network of teachers and support staff to help him through each day, especially the tough days. Without these people supporting him, I do not know how we would have stayed in public schools. Our school is overcrowded, with my son's 4th grade class having 29 students, one teacher, and a three-hour overage aide. Multiple children in the class have additional needs, including my son, and I thank my lucky stars every single day my son's teacher hasn't walked out that door and not come back. She's a wonderful teacher and takes the time to work through his anxiety with him when it arises, and she's so kind and understanding. She also takes the time to email us and keep us informed when he is struggling. His 2nd and 3rd grade teachers, as well as his resource room teachers and speech therapists, have also been amazing to work with each year. I know that he has a long row ahead of him, and I'm terrified of middle school, but knowing many of the teachers there already, I hope we can work together to support him. I am appalled that the teachers in this district have not received their steps as promised, even with the district budget back in the black. I am distraught that we are losing good teachers to other districts that have put more value in the quality of the education their students receive. Too much focus is being placed on the buildings themselves and not what goes on in the buildings. I was recently asked to serve on the visionary committee, and due to a communication error, I was unable to attend the meetings, but the summary of the meetings had been to make the buildings more equitable by adding on more space. I asked about teachers and reducing class size, and were told that was a different budget issue. I see it as the only budget issue. In my opinion, there could be nothing more important than paying our teachers a fair wage. I know many teachers use their own money to buy supplies for children in their classroom. How are classrooms funded for supplies? Is it equal across the district? I'm almost done, like two more sentences, maybe three. How much are teachers expected to pay out-of-pocket to ensure all students have adequate supplies? Not all elementary school PTOs have the same abilities to raise money in this district based on their school population, and not all families have the ability to self-fund what they need. I do not know one teacher that would make a child go without a pencil or a notebook or miss a field trip. Teachers are amazing people with huge hearts, loads of patience. I find it disrespectful not to properly value teachers in the PCCS district with a decent salary. My plea to this district is to not spend so much time focused on building a cafeteria or a gym at every elementary school, instead focus on maintaining our amazing teachers by giving them their step increases as promised and ensuring that they have the support they need in the classroom. Supported teachers equals successful students. Thank you for listening.
Next is Leah Babinski.
My name is Leah Babinski, and I'm a school counselor at Salem High School. I began my teaching career in LA in 2004. After several years of teaching, I decided to go back to school and pursue a 55-credit master's degree in school counseling. I started my career in PCCS at Starkweather, and I'm now in my sixth year as a school counselor at Salem, sixth counselor in, sixth year as a counselor in the district. But my focus tonight is not that I'm on step four and a half in my 13th year in education, but more about a job of a school counselor. School counselors are on the front line when a student dies, a staff member dies, a student is having an anxiety attack, a student didn't get into their dream school, parent has a cancer diagnosis, a student is scrambling to figure out how to graduate, a staff member is worried about a student, a student doesn't feel safe going home, a parent or guardian doesn't know how to get their student to come to school, a student is worried about their friend with an addiction, or the student just needs a trusted adult to talk to confidentially. We are the first contact, the go-to person, the person that should be there when the student needs us, and it is very difficult when we can't be that person. A reduction in the size of our caseloads would go, could go a long way to supporting all students. Mine was at 441 at the start of the school year. The counseling role has changed drastically from when any of us were in school. It has evolved from guidance counselor with the majority of the focus on graduation and course selection to a more holistic approach. We, as school counselors, are trained to focus on the academic success, college and career readiness, and social-emotional development of all students. We follow a set of national standards that help us identify and prioritize the knowledge and skills students should be able to demonstrate as a result of K-12 school counseling programs, which supports MTSS and PBIS-tiered interventions. Recent American School Counseling Association and U of M Trails Training Statistics have estimated that 1 in 4 children has a diagnosable mental health disorder. With this number rising, 49.5% of children will experience a mental illness during adolescence, with over 30% of the diagnoses being anxiety. 80% of children in need of mental health services will not receive them, and 20% of students experience mental health issues that severely interfere with, interfere with school performance. 90% of people who develop a mental health concern show warning signs during their teen years. Teens with mental health problems who get appropriate treatment have increased test scores and improved achievement. Teachers, counselors, administrators, and support staff are feeling this impact, which continues to make our jobs more difficult. We are often left to triage and focus our energies on the crises that emerge daily. We want to be more proactive and preventative in nature. In closing, I want to leave you with these statistics. 6,327 students have checked into the Salem counseling office this year to see us. PCEU counselors have completed more than 509 comment applications. We sent 9,073 emails in the month of March and received 16,892 emails, over 1,000 emails per counselor in a month that we had spring break. We've supported 358 students with 504 plans and conducted over 100 risk assessments. We supported more than 60 students while in hospitalization or day treatment, day treatment programs and their return to school. I encourage and invite all of you to come to the counseling office to see what's going on. Supported counselors means supportive students and staff. Supported teachers and staff equals successful students. Sorry, got to get them.
Next is Leslie Anderson.
All right, hello, everyone. I am Leslie Anderson, a counselor at Liberty Middle School. I have been in the district for 13 years. I started my PCCS days at Central Middle School as a health teacher. I transitioned to school counselor after about seven years and landed at Plymouth High School. I'm crazy, and I missed middle school, so when the opportunity came around to move back to the middle school, I did, and now I'm at Liberty. During this time, I have had my fair share of pink slips, pay freezes, and half-steps. I'm here tonight to talk about not just my frustration with my movement, with the lack of movement of our contract and steps, but also about the workload I have on my plate to accompany my stalled-out compensation. As a middle school counselor, I am always on, always on. At Liberty, my duties as a school counselor include, but are not limited to, scheduling students. That's 8th graders for their high school classes, current students for their upcoming year, and 5th graders for their 6th grade year. In that scheduling, it includes visits to the elementaries and an orientation night for 6th graders. During that time, I am constantly fielding the questions that come with scheduling and the transitions students are making. Back to Leah's emails and that, yeah, that happens here, too. In addition, I handle the 504s for my caseload. I conduct restorative conferences for students and staff that need relationships repaired. I am part of a team that refers students for the MTSS support that we have at Liberty, and the counselors also help with test administration or coordination at Liberty, like the PSAT, the M-Step, and the NWEA. In addition to these responsibilities, my role as a school counselor is also about being there for social and emotional needs of my students, which is honestly what I would rather be doing and why I took the job, other than those other duties I just listed. The mental, social, and emotional health of our current students is at its highest need of support that counselors across this district have ever seen. So, once you do all of that that I listed, take the time to talk with students and help them navigate middle school life, there is not any time for a planning hour. I don't know what that is. My mornings start early, my evenings go late. While I may not have homework to grade, there are always emails to answer, paperwork to complete, data to enter, and then my own mind and emotions to put into check and re-energize for the next day of work. Students bring heavy, heavy loads with them every day. My caseload of students hovers around 400, and that includes all students. That's special ed students, at-risk students, advanced students, and everything in between. The American School Counselor Association suggests a ratio of 250 to 1. I bring all of this up because I'm getting tired. My school counseling colleagues are getting worn down. Morale is low, and no matter how hard I try to remain optimistic, it is hard when we are not seeing movement toward a contract that compensates me for the workload. I thought it was important to give a counselor perspective, because some do not realize we're on the same contract as teachers. I don't get paid more for what I do. I have moved through the same steps, stalled out on the same renegotiated pay scale from what I was hired in in 2006. I'm here asking for support, support for counselors, support for teachers, support for a fair contract. Thank you for your time listening. I invite you, anyone interested, to shadow me, join today, wear comfy shoes, bring your patience. Thank you for your time listening. I invite you, anyone interested, to shadow me, join today, wear comfy shoes, bring your patience. I'm gonna finish up, because I've got a forty-minute drive home, and that's because I can't afford to live around here. Please remember, supported counselors means supportive students and staff, and supported teachers and staff equals successful students. Thank you.
Okay. Next is Dalton Barthold.
I only need like a minute and thirty if it like makes up for any other time that was lost.
Love you, Dalton.
You're welcome. Hi, my name is Dalton Barthold. I'm a regular here at the school board. I come and present about twice a month. I'm here about the same as you guys. Obviously, you do more than I do, but... I was going to talk about the theater, which I've talked about for eighteen consecutive meetings, but hearing all these people that have trained me in my life, they do make a really big impact on me. They are who I am. And so hearing their stories is like really chilling, but I want everybody to know, obviously, that students do support their teachers, and we feel really appreciated. Speaking from my perspective, I know all of these teachers that have helped me in my life have gone beyond their limits and done everything that they could. Yeah, I went on an England trip with Ms. Levy, and hearing her story really got me a little bit cold inside. It was really chilling. So my program, the theater program, is made up of teachers. It is made up of these leaders. And so what's the point of talking about the theater program if there's nobody to even run it or support it? These teachers are lovers of art, music, science, everything, including sports. And so I don't know, you guys have heard the same story all night, but I'm running out of time. So thank you for listening to me, and supported teachers equals successful students.
Thank you. Next is Mike Franzen.
Good evening. I want to say congratulations to Kane. I've been a skateboarder now for thirty-two years. And my brothers, who are now almost in their-- one's in his forties and the one is almost forty, have also been skaters for almost as long. So I think it's wonderful when we see young students taking initiatives, particularly skateboarders, you know, in the neighborhoods and the streets, who obviously get a bad rap for being skateboarders and to actually start and follow through with, you know, what they're trying to set out in their goals. Also, with Ms. Levy, I think it's a shame that we're losing her, and she's resigning. Frequently, I show up to work five fifty, six o'clock in the morning to prep for my auto classes, and who's in my spot typically is Ms. Levy. She's there early, and she plans, and she preps, and she cares, and she never really felt like she got the support from the administration. So I feel it's a shame that we're losing her, because she works hard, and we're losing a good teacher, one who cares. There are a lot of good teachers out there, but she puts her heart and her soul into it. So I'd like to say goodbye to her, and it was a pleasure working with her, and thank you. I'm here on behalf of CTE, the contract. You know the story. I mean, I support, obviously, all the teachers. I wore a red free shirt that I had. But I'm here for CTE, Career and Technical Education, in response to last board meeting when Mr. Keough brought up classroom sizes. And auto paint was one that was brought up as far as having fifteen students in a class. And this isn't like to attack anybody, because I know you all work hard and you work tirelessly, and I appreciate that. That goes from the union to the board members to Ms. Merritt and everybody else around. I don't run just fifteen kids in paint. I run fifteen kids in paint, and I also run fifteen kids in collision at the same time, which is a two-hour block, and I also run fifteen kids in paint first hour, then fifteen kids in paint second hour, which is twenty-nine, well, really fourteen and fifteen, so it's twenty-nine one hour and thirty the next hour, running two different classes at the same time. Two different curriculums in probably the most hazardous area in the park. I'll explain why in a second. A 2009 study by the Health and Safety Executive Report stated that automotive painters are eighty times more likely to develop asthma than a worker in any other environment. Students can potentially be exposed to isocyanates, which are responsible for asthma, the leading workplace asthma, and sensitization. Heavy metals, which obviously do not leave the body and are a human carcinogen, hearing loss due to excessive and prolonged exposure to loud equipment, vision loss through hazardous chemicals that we deal with on a daily basis, and organic vapors that are-- that can lead to central nervous system dysfunction and organ dysfunction. So while I put my own self at risk, I'm putting your children at risk as well. And I think oversized classes only greatly put them at risk. And nobody's there to really check on myself to make sure that I'm keeping your children safe. It's all laid back on me to make sure I'm following the EPA and OSHA regulations and guidelines. So while I do think that thirty-six, thirty-eight, forty people in a classroom in chemistry or in social studies, it's not the same thing. There is-- you don't walk into a chemistry class or a social studies class and not take anything away from those disciplines. It's not the same thing, and I think we do need to have a reduction in class sizes, particularly in the CTE, or at least in the skilled trades, because it's hard to address these safety concerns while also addressing all the curriculum demands that we're under. And if you would like to get together, I'm more than welcome, or I'm more than open to the idea of trying to start a committee to address skilled trades in the district, because I think they're underfunded at a district level. But I think we're adequately funded from the state because of our added cost funding, because of our prior work experience. But I think we definitely need to emphasize skilled trades in the machining, woodworking, electrical. Those classes are underfunded and underdeveloped as we speak, so I am open to meet with you at any given time about developing that curriculum or even expanding out into industry with partnerships that I've already formed through my program. So that's an open-door policy, so please, anytime that you want to see my program, more than welcome to come down there. I mean, I've seen Ms. Merritt before. Mr. Books has come to see me before, and I know a number of you have walked down to see my program before. And Mr. Brandon, for sure, always brings people by with a smile, so I thank you for that. And that is really about it. Thank you for allowing me to go over my time. Have a good night. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Sharon Schwank.
I met y'all last meeting. Sharon Schwank. I teach ELA at East Middle School. And I have on my swimming sweatshirt. Last time I was here after swim practice, but tonight it's after track practice, and then I spent hours doing recommendations for students for other things. But the reason why I'm here tonight is because I've been here when Dalton's been speaking a couple times. Dalton Barthold, he was my student in eighth grade. This young man that you see right here, this man with confidence, and I say man, young man, not kid, this young man who's sitting right there, this is not the eighth grade student I had. Dalton wouldn't have not been at the front of the classroom speaking to a group of you. But the arts at the park, that is what gave him the confidence that he has to do what he's been doing for how many meetings he's been doing it, the arts at the park. Dalton, can I embarrass you for a second? Dalton, can you tell them where you're gonna go to college?
I'm not going to England. I'm going to State University of New York at Purchase in New York.
Dalton, yes. Dalton and a number of the kids who I had in my genet eighth grade class are pursuing acting degrees. They're going to school for the arts or theater, like a number of them, at least four or five kids that I had in my class that were not confident kids. Please, please. Anything that we can do to support this program, to be able to have kids, young people, go out there and pursue these dreams, because Dalton would not have done this without what's going on at the park with the arts. Please support that. And I have to say that this, this is a successful student. And he just was up here talking to you, and this was not what I was gonna talk about, but he was up here talking to you about the people in this audience who've made a difference for him. I hope I'm one of those. I really do, because, man, I want to be part of that success story. Successful-- yeah, that. There you go.
Next is Eliza Merkel.
I'm going to talk really-- I'm gonna talk really fast, so try to keep it as close to three minutes as possible. Hi, everybody. I'm Eliza Merkel, and I'm the parent of a seventh grader and a tenth grader in the district. I'd like to share some thoughts I have with you on the School Start and End Times Initiative. Although I am a member of the School Start/End Times Committee, I am not representing that committee here tonight, nor do I speak on their behalf. Every day, we expect our kids to be alert, ready to learn, well-behaved, and focused on achievement. Yet for our adolescents, we expect them to do all of that at a time of day when their brains are telling them to sleep. The scientific community has proven this. It is no longer a matter of opinion. It is fact. Based on that, we no longer need to ask the question, should we change our school start and end times? Rather, the important question now is, how do we change our school schedules to support students' well-being, their physical and mental health, and ultimately their academic achievement? The School Start Times Committee has come up with a variety of ideas to consider, but the work is far from over. We need to-- we need input from our leaders to further that mission and turn it into action. Recently, we've seen more attention paid to the mental health struggles of our students. We know that anxiety, depression, and suicide ideation are on the rise among adolescents. I applaud the district for recognizing this and attempting to address these painful issues that our students and communities face. However, at the very same time, our high school schedule is a huge impediment to improving mental health outcomes for adolescents. The relationship between sleep deprivation and mental health is well-established, as is the relationship between poor mental health and academic outcomes. Our kids need a schedule that will not impair their ability to be their best selves. Part of PCEP's mission statement includes the following. "The unique environment at PCEP supports academic excellence, personal success, and community participation." I would argue that the current start times at PCEP are at odds with that stated mission. Some stakeholder-- stakeholders have maintained-- have argued to maintain the status quo, pointing out that many of us grew up with these very early start times, and we turned out just fine, or that getting up very early is a good preparation for the real world. While there may be some truth in those statements, today we know a lot more about the adolescent brain, and now that we know better, we must do better. Some stakeholders contend that we cannot change our school schedules because there's no other way to accommodate the numerous activities and athletic schedules for our students. We know how complex those schedules are for extracurriculars, and we know that they are a very important part of student life. However, they are not more important than the health and well-being of all of our students, and they are not more important than academics. We do-- we do not need consensus to move forward on this initiative. We have science and data to show us what needs to change, and we have leadership to show us how to change. You are that leadership. We expect our leaders to do the right thing for our kids, even when it is cumbersome and unpopular and sometimes very expensive. You've told us you could lead our district toward educational excellence. We have trusted you with our kids. It is time for you, the leaders of this educational community, to do what is best for our kids, what is best for all of our kids. Thanks.
Thank you. Those are all the cards I have. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak? Thank you. Next, we are administrative reports and recommendations, and first up is the superintendent's report.
Thank you, President Berninski. I will keep my comments brief this evening, so I know we have a lot on the agenda to get to. But I do want to thank Dalton for a personalized invitation to the play that is taking place the last weekend. Check, please, for the PCEP Park Players Theater Company. They're having their final weekend on this weekend, May third and fourth, so we thank you. I will be present to support you there at that play. Very excited about seeing it. That will be at Little-- yeah, got it. That's gonna be at Kent Little Theater. The tickets are ten dollars, and they may be purchased online or at the box office starting one hour before the showtime, or you can purchase those online. So I hope that all of you have an opportunity, if you have not been so, to come and support the Park Players. Also, just want to share again and remind some about the Suicide Prevention Community Forum. We've heard a lot this evening about mental health and some supports that we're working in conjunction with the American Foundation for Suicide Prevention. So tomorrow night, May first, at seven o'clock PM in Salem High School's Logan Auditorium, this presentation will take place. It's open to all PCCS community, students, and families. Mr. Tiskwit shared with us during the policy committee also some additional supports that have been put in place this last month and in the upcoming future that I want to share with you in board notes, because I think some-- it's something that I just want to share, something to be proud of. And finally, with this Sunday coming up, we have our SJ5K that begins at eight AM at PCEP. I know that we had the members of students come to talk about the SJ5K, share the experiences, what a support it is for our families and our community, so if you have not signed up for a team, make sure you do so and come out to support. Also, a shout out to our Special Education Department and community that held their annual autism walk this past Saturday. We had the opportunity to participate, and just wonderful families, cool weather, but it was worth it, coming together, supporting the needs of our students, so thank you for that.
Thank you. Next, we have Teaching and Learning. Dr. Bender.
Thank you, President Berninski, and good evening, members of the board. PCCS offers a comprehensive program to support English learners and their families across all schools and across all levels of learning. We are joined this evening by a wonderful team of educators who will share the programming in place to help EL students to be successful. Getting us started is our district leader for English Learner Services, our Director of State and Federal Programs, Ms. Kimberly May.
All right. Good evening.
Good evening.
Take my breath. Sorry, standing in the hallway for a minute. Good evening, and thank you for the opportunity to share about our EL programs, or EL program in district-wide. That's a glossary for you, and I'll speak to it once I get started, but I just wanted you guys to have it in your hands. And so just to give you a little background information about our EL population, our district has been growing steadily with our numbers of EL students. During the 2015-2016 school year, we supported one thousand twenty-five EL students. In this school year, we are currently supporting one thousand two hundred and forty EL students. We also support four hundred and thirty-four students who have exited the program. We have to monitor the students for four years. We monitor their progress, as well as we make any academic adjustments that are necessary for the student. These students are known as FALS, which means Former EL Students. Our EL student population speaks sixty-nine different languages. This evening, we are going to showcase some of our schools, teachers, and the programs you've supported through the hiring of the ELD teachers, the purchase of a language line, along with other instructional tools. You will also notice how our work correlates directly to the district's belief statements, respecting and valuing all voices, experiences, opinions, and cultures, being open to new ideas and risk-taking, a variety of approaches to teaching including culturally responsive instructional strategies, methods, and materials that promote and support equity through an assets-based mindset. Our work also meets the objectives of the Dynamic Plan and has positively impacted student achievement with gains on standardized tests, including NWEA, M-Step, and WEDA. During our presentation, we may use terms that are unfamiliar to those not working in the EL world. So in preparation, we've prepared a glossary of terms for you. As you are aware, we have changed our delivery model at the elementary level to include sixteen ELD teachers and thirteen EL paraprofessionals. Our EL paraprofessionals push into classrooms to assist with scaffolding and support-- and supporting students with lessons using a, using a variety of strategies, including visuals and Realia. Our ELD teachers support students by meeting with them in small groups to assist with language acquisition, literacy, and academic vocabulary, using a variety of instructional strategies, including PSYOP. This evening, we will highlight the success of this model, supporting the varying needs of our EL students. At the middle school level, we are currently supporting 184 students through a co-teaching model, as well as EL-specific courses for newcomer students and students demonstrating entering levels of English proficiency. We have a full-time certified teacher at each of our middle schools. Co-teaching is the model that we're using, and that not only allows our EL teachers access, I'm sorry, our EL students, access to core content subject matter, but it also builds capacity with our core content teachers with learning and implementing PSYOP strategies. And you'll hear more about that this evening from our teachers. PSYOP strategies are culturally responsive teaching strategies that are evidence-based and beneficial for all students. And you will hear about that this evening as well with, from our Discovery Middle School teachers. We have found the co-teaching model to be the most effective approach to supporting both newcomer students and long-term EL students. At the middle school level, 70% of our population are long-term ELs, and we are striving to decrease that percentage. Long-term ELs are students who have been in an EL program for five years or longer. At the high school level, we are currently supporting 227 students through EL-specific courses for newcomers and for students, again, demonstrating entering levels of English proficiency. We also have shelter courses and a co-taught ELA class. At the high school level, we have two and a half certified EL teachers. That's two full-time teachers at PCEP and a, and a half-teacher at Starkweather. Or a half-time teacher, not a half-teacher. And at this time, I am excited to share the teaching staff that is with us this evening showcasing what EL support looks like within Plymouth Canton Community Schools. So, before I do this, I'm going to deviate just for a second, because we have other teachers who are not presenting, but they are ELD teachers and EL teachers in our district who have come out to support. So I would like to at least acknowledge them, ask them to stand for a moment. They're shy. And so with that, this evening, we have Kathy Dean, who is an ELD teacher at Field Elementary School. We also have Diana Natty and Courtney Stewart, who are also ELD teachers, and they are at Bentley Elementary School. We have Jennifer Mara, who is an EL teacher, and Luke Hadad, who is a social studies teacher from Discovery Middle School. And we have one of our EL coaches, our secondary coach, Mrs. Jamie Badger, here to present. And so, at this moment, I'd like to call up Kathy Dean.
This is a map I have posted in my hallway, right in front of my classroom at Field Elementary School. And it shows my English learner students, who come from all over the world, but one culture. I started my EL career as an EL parapro in the Plymouth Canton Community School District. And while I was a parapro, I received and applied for an Apples Grant, and I was able to renew my teaching certificate and go on to earn my second master's teaching EL. So thank you for providing those ELD teacher positions at the elementary level. Over those four years as an EL parapro and on to my two years as an ELD teacher, I've seen many positive changes in the district. And I've listed some of them there, but I'd just like to highlight one. Before, there was really limited time to collaborate with teachers in terms of supporting our EL students. And now, we're really working as a team, the ELD teachers, the content teachers, and the EL parapros, all working together to fully support our EL students. I'm also able to facilitate a connection of what I teach in my small pull-out classroom to what the students are learning in their, in their classrooms, using the content to teach the English language. Take a moment to imagine yourself going to a foreign country as a child, shortly after being enrolled in a school where you don't have any friends, and everybody is speaking a different language to you. So if you look at the student on the left in that picture, that is a newcomer student who came to Field this year. And as you can see, he was very scared and crying. And we stood in that threshold, the doorway into the classroom, for a long time. And even though we had pulled some students who could speak his native language, and I had a translation app in my other hand, he wouldn't even lift his head. Eventually, we made our way into the classroom and sat down at his seat, and luckily, I was able to spend most of the day with him. And I knew that we were making progress when I saw him slowly take off one glove, and then the next, then his jacket, and then I saw his finger pointing to the iPad that I had for him. And the pictures on the right show much happier times for that student. And letting those students know that there is somebody there to support them and advocate for them makes a world of difference. To create a safe environment where they feel like they can be accepted and they can learn and take chances. So these two students are in my newcomer class, first grade. And one of them speaks Japanese, one of them speaks Spanish, and yet, we all communicate together. They've become the best of friends. And that's through the use of a lot of scaffolding and support. We also do this through an asset-based mindset. So instead of thinking, "This student doesn't know how to speak in English", you're thinking, "This student speaks a different language, maybe even more than one, and they're learning English", and that's really remarkable, and what assets they are to our school community. We advocate what's called a WEDA Can Do Philosophy, which focuses on what our ELs can do at every level of learning. It's part of my job to meet my EL's needs of where they are, and then make a bridge to grade-level expectations, using supports and scaffolds to close that achievement gap between them and their non-EL peers. There's a balance between content and language, which integrates all of the WEDA domains, listening, speaking, reading, and writing. And using the content to teach the English language then creates more authentic, meaningful interactions with active participation. So in that picture, those were my two newcomer students, their first week together, and I started a unit on seasons. And they are creating their very own anchor chart through the use of a lot of scaffolds. We use a lot of pictures, videos, some translation, sentence stems, things like that. And slowly, we peel those scaffolds back away as we find, through the weeks and months, that they need them less and less. This is the same student, who was very cheerful on the first day. And his class, in his classroom, they were working on opinion writing. So in my small group, I was able to scaffold it and use graphic organizers, a lot of pictures and Realia. And he was able to write his own opinion piece with a topic sentence with an opinion. He was able to give reasoning for his opinion and then conclude and restate his topic sentence. I'd like to show a video of that.
Dogs are my favorite pet, because I like to run with them. I love when dogs run over the wall. I like to pet dogs for fun. I like to hear dogs woof, woofing. Dogs are my favorite.
And really, that smile says it all. He was able to write that and then present it in English. So I was very proud of him. In addition to my work with the newcomer students, I also believe it's important to make connections and develop relationships with their families. For the parents who don't speak English, we have been given an opportunity to use what is called Language Line, which allows us to call the parent, and there's an interpreter on the line who can interpret for us. So that is one of the things that you've provided us with, and I'd like to thank you for that. So on that first day of school for that student, I used it at lunchtime and called that mom to reassure that he was doing fine, he was smiling and, and having a good day. And she was, in turn, able to ask me some questions. I feel very fortunate to be able to take the time with those newcomer students and their families to learn more about their native countries, their culture, and their backgrounds. I was invited to a Japanese open house in the fall, and I went on a Saturday morning, and I went to see some of my students there that go to Japanese school on Saturday. And I got to walk into their classrooms and see what they do all day on Saturday. And boy, did they light up when they saw me. And I lit, I lit up too when I saw them, excuse me. We also, at Field School, for two years running, we've hosted Around Our World, which the PTO sponsors and helps with. And that's where families come to share their cultures with us. They share their food, they have a trifold set up where you can learn more about their cultures. All of these extra connections really add up, showing our ELs and families that they're important to us, that they're respected, and their cultures are respected. Taking the time and steps to create a comfortable environment promotes social and emotional learning, and also taking educational risks. Once students feel safe in their school and comfortable, that's when they start taking those risks. This year, then, I had a newcomer student who was very comfortable taking those risks in my pull-out classroom, but it wasn't transferring over into his other classroom. And so I worked with that teacher. We were able to collaborate and come up with different strategies. And boy, did we celebrate when he reached that breakthrough, and he was able to write a paper on his family tree and present it in front of his classmates. And that was remarkable. With pleasure, and handing it over to Diana Natty and Courtney Stewart.
All right. I'm Diana Natty from Bentley Elementary School. And building off what Kathy shared about building relationships with families, Courtney and I have started offering home visits this year to the families of the students that we serve. Our main goal in this venture is to get to know families better, increase family engagement, and to bridge that homeschool relationship, and learn more about their culture and values in order to help us teach in a more culturally responsive way. Early in the year, we sent home letters, translated in a few languages, to explain that we were interested in meeting with families in their homes. Of course, it takes time to build trust, and we had to promote the home visits at conferences. We emailed again, sent, sent follow-up communication. But so far this year, we have been able to visit with 12 families in their homes, and the visits have been amazing. One tool that has really helped us has been Language Line, as Kathy mentioned. So thank you again for that investment. With this, we have been able to have deep, hour-long conversations with families, while normally, we would only be able to communicate at a surface level. One benefit of home visits is that it's a chance for us to see the whole child. Teachers everywhere are working every day to meet the unique needs of students with a variety of academic, social, emotional, or behavioral needs. And with home visits, we are able to see students in a new light. I'm going to show you a video now of a student who is able to show another side of himself as an engineer. So amazing. And after the home visit, we are all able to tap into his interests and talents better in the classroom. Another benefit of home visits is that we were able to understand the needs of the families better. Through home visits, I have found out that a family did not quite understand the process of our overflow schools and wasn't sure where their child would go to school next year. So we were able to help them understand that. I've also been able to help families find resources for after-school care and summer programs. And through these home visits, we're also able to better understand the deep culture of our students. For example, one of the questions that we always ask families is, "What are you most proud of as a family?" And a theme has emerged. A lot of families talk about the closeness of the family, how they are one, and how they support one another in everything that they do. I've learned that the idea of independence differs widely between cultures, and what some may view as coddling is viewed very differently by others. And on the other end of the spectrum, having an eight-year-old cook on the grill might seem dangerous to some, but is an expected contribution to the family by others. So learning things like this through home visits has been very helpful. We learn more about cultural values, family experiences, and interests, and we have been able to teach our students better and build strong partnerships with families. And the next day, the children are so excited to tell their friends that Mrs. Natty and Mrs. Stewart were at their house last night.
Good evening. I'm Courtney, and I'm going to be talking to you about a club at Bentley Elementary. So in addition to home visits, we have piloted a multicultural ambassadors club at Bentley to raise the cultural competency of our school. And our mission is to empower students as ambassadors for identity, diversity, justice, and action in a multicultural world. We are doing this through two means. Students are positioned as ambassadors by relaying the information they have learned from the meeting to their teachers and peers. For example, this past week, we did identity circles where students labeled different parts of their identity. Students then took that activity back to their classes and led it with their classmates. And wow, I was amazed to watch students do this, because not only did they take up the work as their own, they really took ownership of the work, they also were beaming with pride at the fact that they were leading the classroom. Also, this club serves as a way to boost self and academic confidence. Students representing various ethnicities, races, and genders have applied for the club, including EL and non-EL students, long-term EL students, and two newcomer students. This club has provided more opportunities for these students to take up leadership roles. Last week, a colleague emailed Diana and I about that little girl, Avery there. She's in second grade, and she's a part of our club. And my colleague said that she asked Avery how her day was going, and Avery said, "This is the best day of my life." And when the colleague asked why, she said, "Because she got to go to the multicultural ambassador club meeting that day." Hearing that solidified that this work is very important work. This year, we're solely focusing on identity. Next year, we're going to revisit identity and move into diversity, justice, and action. And that picture there is a picture of us eating lunch together, and that's how we typically begin our meetings. We enjoy lunch together. I ask them how their day is going, and they share exciting things coming up in their weekends. And then, we move into answering one of our essential questions. And we do this through discussion and also group activities. Our essential questions for April were, "What is identity, and how do I identify?" In May, we're going to be talking about how our group identities overlap or intersectionalities. And then the second meeting, we'll be talking about how stereotypes impact our identities. Then in June, we're taking a trip to the Detroit Institute of Arts, where students will be learning how artwork is influenced by the artist's identity. And then, at the end of the year, we plan to have a celebration. The multicultural ambassadors club has already impacted our school greatly, and I believe our ambassadors will continue to be leaders in equity throughout their educational experience. Thank you. Now I'm going to hand it over to Luke and Jennifer to tell you about our middle school EL programming.
Good evening. My name is Jennifer Mara, and I am the EL teacher at Discovery Middle School. This is my fourth year in that role at the school. We'd like to start off by thanking We'd like to start off by thanking our assistant principal, Alex Norroyan, for being here to support us today. In the bottom right-hand picture, that's him covered in snowballs, supporting us at school as well. So as, this is my fourth year in the EL position, I've seen many different models come through the school. So when I first started, we kind of did EL as an elective class in the middle school, which if you know middle schools, that's a tough sell. We're going to pull you out, and your elective is going to be EL instead of gym, instead of STEM, instead of art. So that didn't work so well. We tried it in homeroom, where it's competing with other things going on in the school, and we tried it in a pullout. And really, it is through co-teaching that I have seen the biggest gains. And part of that is because we're able to reach our newcomers, our reaching ELs, our long-term ELs, and the students that decline services. And one reason this has been so easy for me is because I was placed with a great co-teacher with Luke Adet.
Thank you, Jen. So I've been co-teaching for four years now. In our first year, Jen was randomly placed with me. My EL students were spread between my five classes. And in the past four years, we've seen a lot of growth. Now Jen is with me full-time for Fifth Hour. Every eighth-grade EL student comes through our classroom through the deliberate placement of students. And being able to full-time plan with Jen has really improved our co-teaching model. And through co-teaching, we've actually been able to expand what more that we do through our school. And what's really cool about this is that this actually brings out our EL students who tend to be more shy through us doing Student Council and the Washington DC trip. That really gets them more excited for, for school.
So one thing that's great about us doing things outside of our classroom is that we can help to foster a sense of belonging with the EL students who don't always feel like they belong. EL students are a minority, and by bringing them in into different activities, we're helping them to feel like they belong. So one thing, like when we do lunch and bus duties, we watch our EL students, and we watch for moments to talk to them about. And one thing Luke is really good with is, he'll watch what happens with a student in an authentic situation, and then tell a story about it in the classroom.
So an example of this, we have a student named Viraj. He, we call him V-Dog in our class, and he was playing football with his classmates, and he made an interception and made a game-winning touchdown, or at least that's how I told the story, because I exaggerated it to our Fifth Hour that, that day. And the kids always almost get really excited about the stories that we share. And what, some of that Jen does really good is she really personalizes the class so that all of our students can have nicknames.
So it kind of started as the kids kind of started creating their own nicknames, and we, of course, rolled with it. And so we started incorporating these nicknames as much as possible. So even like, when I needed to see a student, and we had it out on the monitor in the hallway at Discovery, like, I had his nickname put up there. So he would know that it was coming from me, and just kind of feel that sense of connection that students don't always feel as well. And now recently, we have students like giving us more like, oh, well, what about, we had a student last week, why don't you call me Kiki Siddiqui? And we're like, okay, we'll go with that too. And so another thing Luke does really well, just to kind of foster that sense of family, he teaches guitar, he'll pull out his guitar, always to the tune of Despacito. Sometimes it's about curriculum, sometimes it's about the students. We have a tradition of writing the 12 Days of Fifth Hour with our kids, like the 12 Days of Christmas. And really, the point of this is just to get them to belong, and to get our ELs, our middle school ELs who want to hide and want to retreat, to be out there, comfortable, belonging with us.
This picture right here, this is our Fifth Hour. This is a blend of EL and non-EL students, and as you could see, we all get along great. And the reason why we told you about our background and what we do at our school, it's so important for our students to feel comfortable in class, because once they're comfortable, they're going to take risks, and then we can fully access the content.
So the, the middle school slides are broken down into the different language domains that are assessed by WIDA, and how we kind of attack that in the classroom. So the first one we're talking about here is we're talking about speaking in the content area.
So an example of this, and what we kind of do with co-teaching, I'll bring out the content, and Jen will monitor around and see how engaged students are and what they're actually getting out of it. So I was teaching a lesson on the election of 1824, when Andrew Jackson was running for president, and it deals with the corrupt bargain. And Jen came up to me afterwards and goes, Luke, the kids didn't get it.
I didn't get it.
She didn't get it. So, and if she wasn't getting it, the kids weren't getting it either. So she just went home that night and literally wrote a play. And so we wanted to show you guys that, so that the kids could get it better.
I'm Andrew Jackson, and I'm running for president.
I'm Henry Clay, and I'm running for president.
I'm John Quincy Adams, and I'm running for president.
I'm here to announce that none of you won the Electoral College.
But how can that be?
No one won the Electoral College because no one got 50% of the votes, because there are three of you running.
I have an idea. Since I am the leader of the House of Representatives, I will make them appoint you as president. If you do me a favor, make me Secretary of State.
So all I have to do is give you a job of Secretary of State, and you will get the House of Representatives to make me president.
Exactly.
That doesn't seem fair.
Not only is it not fair, but it is corrupt, and that is the corrupt bargain.
The student there, Aditya, he, he's wearing the jacket, said, "It doesn't fair." What was really also cool beyond this, the students just learning about the topic, he told us that he was an actor in India, something that we would have never learned about had Jen not written this play. And then I actually incorporated this lesson into all of my classes and see approved quiz and test scores.
The second domain that we're going to talk about that WIDA assesses is reading in the content area. And Luke did a very good job through, through the past years of using the textbook and disseminating the information through that. But with EL students and non-EL students, sometimes it takes just an extra scaffold to get them to fully get what was going on. So at the beginning, we took, we did what's called a textbook mapping assignment. We kept, copied a section, laid it out for the students to see, and helped them to see how one section in a history textbook tells a story. We were also able to point out different textbook features, such as headings, subheadings, pictures, captions, graphs, guiding questions, things that we take for granted that they know, and they don't always know. And we were able then to just touch on these things throughout the year and help them to comprehend the textbook better. The third domain that we're going to talk about is listening in the content area. And I think this is one that is important to talk about, because a lot of times, we assume that kids are listening if they're looking at us, and that's not always true. And there's a huge difference between hearing and listening for understanding.
So one of the main ways that we use listening in the content area is through NearPod, which is actually something our district has invested in, that we use heavily, so thank you for that. What NearPod is, is it's a direct way for us to, to do instruction. It allows for us to do quick formative assessments, things like polls, quizzes, open-ended questions. It's an interactive lecture, instead of just using the typical PowerPoint or, or Google Slides.
And then we have speaking in the content area. And speaking is one that we focus on a lot, I'm sorry, writing in the content area. And writing is one that we focus on a lot, because our WIDA data shows that students are consistently underperforming in writing. So Luke was already doing a lot of writing in his classroom, and was doing a lot of work with vocabulary, and then I just added in some PSYOP strategies to help aid our EL and non-EL students.
One of the PSYOP strategies she came up with was Tic-Tac-Toe, some she came up with herself. She thought of nine different ways that the students can grasp the vocabulary, and in a way that is personalized to their own learning style. So this student right here, Delano, he really enjoys music, so he wrote a song so that he could help remember Marbury versus Madison, for example.
And then the last thing I'm going to talk about is just academic vocabulary in general. And this has been a huge focus of the EL department in middle school, particularly because data shows that EL students can learn social language in two to three years, but it can take six and seven years for them to get academic vocabulary. Couple years ago, at the middle school level, we had a class called Academic Language, which ran as an elective. And the teachers could give me all the vocabulary in the world, and I could work with them, and we could do activities, and then they'd go back to their classroom, and there was a disconnect. They just didn't get that what I was doing with them in the elective was the exact same thing they were doing in class. So by being there, being in the content class with the teacher, we're able to use these strategies authentically, these words in the context of where they're being used, and that's really just helped to make better connections for the students. So I would like to thank the district for really investing in the co-teaching model. We have been granted adjoining classrooms, we've gone to out-of-district PDs, we've had co-teaching PDs in district, we've been given half-days to co-plan, and those things are what's really driving this model right now.
In addition, I kind of mentioned this earlier, the PSYOP strategies aren't just helping out our co-taught class. I take everything that she suggests and then put it into the other classes, so that both EL and non-EL, non-EL students are benefiting.
And as a result, next year, instead of co-teaching one class, we'll be co-teaching two classes, and we hope to continue that in the future.
Now we're going to turn things over to Jamie.
Okay, good evening. I will be talking about our high school programming. So all of the programming decisions that we have to make at the high school level are really driven by the need of the integration of standards in order to prepare our EL students for academic success at Plymouth Canton and beyond. Our students come from a wide range of cultural and linguistic backgrounds, as everyone has attested to today. Additionally, their English language proficiency levels are equally diverse. Across the park and at Stark Weather, one can expect to find EL students who have recently arrived in the United States. These newcomer students are at the beginning stages of English language development. Surprising to many people, one also will find long-term EL students. And those are students who were born in the United States but are still continuing to develop their English language. And then landing somewhere in between, we have our intermediate-level students, and they are still, again, in the process of acquiring that English language proficiency. But regardless of a student's English language proficiency, our job is to provide access to grade-level content in order for our EL students to meet graduation requirements. We also have the exciting challenge to meet our students where they are in their English language development, in order to propel them to their final destination of graduation. Keep in mind that all of their instruction is in English, no matter the proficiency level or home language background. So taking a look at some of the photos on the slide behind you, some of you, and some of these photos show some group work, and you'll see that there are EL newcomers and intermediate-level EL students engaging in collaborative learning activities in their EL classes. The top photo shows newcomer students who are working on oral language development and vocabulary development with their peers during their EL communications class. The bottom photo shows some intermediate-level students, and they're working in small groups, they're writing dialogue in their language development class. They later use the written dialogue to support an oral presentation in the form of a play. And this was an activity which supported the integration of writing and speaking in the target language of English. Many of the students pictured here, working together, do not share a common language other than the target language of English. Our students and teachers utilize strategies to provide comprehensible input and opportunities to use language in meaningful contexts. We know this is essential for language acquisition. And finally, the other young man in the photo is an IB student, he's still an EL student, but he's an IB student, and he was invited by one of our EL teachers at the park to come to her communications class to share his journey in his language development with her EL students. He arrived at PSEUP as a freshman, and now he's a senior. So as you can see, we have a language-rich EL student population. Aside from our self-contained EL classes at PSEUP, this slide shows additional content area courses that are currently offered. Notice that we launched a co-taught English 9 course this year, after seeing the successful implementation of co-teaching in our middle schools. This course has opened up an opportunity for long-term ELs, as well as intermediate-level, and for them to participate in English 9 course with the support of an EL teacher and a content teacher, one being the English teacher. Sheltered courses also provide access to grade-level content for our intermediate EL students. These courses are taught using the PSYOP method. Use of this research-based teaching method is considered best practices for English learners, but is good for all students, and is also an integral part and component of our district improvement plan, and a commitment to culturally responsive teaching. The availability of sheltered classes in required core content areas also provides that ever-important path to graduation for our students. And going further, going to the 2019-2020 school year, we want to continue offering sheltered courses and co-taught classes to reach more students. We are also updating our core curriculum resource in our self-contained EL classes, and we will be providing a Chromebook cart to share between those two classrooms to support technology integration and access to the components of the curriculum, which are digital. These devices will also provide language support tools for EL students of varying proficiency levels. The addition also will remove a technology barrier that we have discovered with our EL students in those two classes. When, we took a very informal poll, and only 50% of the students were participating in our district's one-to-one technology program. So we hope by providing that Chromebook cart, it'll give them access to that technology, and hopefully, they'll see the value in it and actually sign up for the one-to-one program going forward, so they can use it in all of their classes. And then lastly, addressing Stark Weather Academy, we want to see a smooth transition from PSEUP to Stark Weather for those students who need to make that move. So by using the same curriculum, resources as our PSEUP EL students use, is one way that we can support that need. Additionally, we are going to continue to develop and structure any, the EL study skills class to meet the needs of the learners there at Stark Weather as well. So I thank you for your time, and I'm going to turn it back over to Kimberly.
So wrapping up, I would like to share just some, some of our next steps. And so in our plans, we are continuing to audit our EL programs and making the necessary adjustments according to our student population, and of course, our achievement data. As you have heard, we are doing phenomenal things. We're really proud of the things that we're doing, and hopefully, you guys are after tonight's presentation. But we're also making a difference for our students and our families, and that's what's most important to us, and that's what we are seeing the fruits of, and so that's what makes us really excited. As our population continues to grow, and the needs of our families are evolving, we are hoping to add an additional ELD teacher to begin co-teaching at the elementary level at Gallimore. We are also hoping to utilize this particular teacher to work with our preschool teachers to help them with the planning of lessons, execution of lessons, as well as training them with the PSYOP model and accommodating lessons. While we do not identify preschool students, we are well-aware that we have preschool students who, who are learning English and teach, I'm sorry, speak a different language. And so we want to begin those supports as early as possible. We are also looking to increase our EL support at the middle school level by adding an additional three teachers. So that would be two full-time teachers at Discovery, and, I'm sorry, one full-time teacher at Discovery, one full-time teacher at Liberty, and then splitting a teacher between Pioneer and East to increase our co-teaching model, so that we can provide co-taught classes across all grade levels in science and in social studies. We also would like to increase the number of sheltered teachers as, I'm sorry, sheltered classes, as Jamie spoke to, as well as add a additional ELA co-taught class, and that would be an ELA 10 course. In doing so, we will be providing the necessary courses and supports for our EL students to be placed and remain on the track to graduation, and to ensure that our students are college and career-ready. We are planning to continue to build classroom teacher capacity by training another elementary grade level in PSYOP, as well as a secondary content area. And finally, we are working to continue to increase our family engagement by removing barriers that may exist. We are currently offering transportation to our immigrant families, or immigrant parents' families, to school events, conferences, parent conferences, ESL classes, or conversation groups offered through the Plymouth Canton Literacy Council, using our Title III Immigrant Grant. And we plan to continue to offer this support next school year. We are also planning to continue to host our K-12 parent meetings. We have found these parent meetings to have a positive impact for our families and our school community. Just last week, or week before last, I can't remember now, I'm sorry, but we hosted a K-12 parent meeting that we were able to pull together all of our district resources, and so we were able to have Maria Malloy present to assist parents with kindergarten registration. We also had information regarding our preschool programs. Nick, Nick was there to talk about our community ed programs. We also partnered with our Director of Security, John Walker, and the Canton Police Department. And so we pretty much had, and the libraries, both Canton and Plymouth Library. And so this was an opportunity for our parents to come in and to have and to have a somewhat of an inclusive environment where they had the opportunity to ask questions that were specific to their needs. And so, at this time, I'd just like to tell you, thank you again for your support, for this opportunity to showcase our work. And we're open for any questions that you may have.
Questions? Member Sidhu, did you have a question?
Not a question. I'll wait. I have just a comment.
Okay.
So, I'm sorry for, the glossary was very helpful, but I'm still not quite following the difference between a sheltered class and a co-taught class.
Okay. So, the sheltered courses are courses with one teacher, and that teacher uses the PSYOP model to deliver the instruction. The co-teaching classes have two teachers. So, you have an EL teacher, and then you also have a core content teacher. Your sheltered course, that's going to be a core content teacher, not an EL-certified teacher.
I'm sorry, say again, the last piece?
So, your sheltered classes, that teacher is going to be a core content teacher, not an EL-certified teacher.
Okay. And do we find that the sheltered classes are as effective as the co-op classes, co-taught classes?
So, in terms of building capacity for teachers, we would like co-taught classes all across the board. But sheltered classes are effective. We're not saying that they're not effective. But anytime you can have two teachers in a classroom, that's going to be more effective than one teacher.
Okay.
If that makes sense.
Just making sure I understand, because it looks like that we're making some investments in the co-taught classes. But we still are predominantly, at least at the high school level, sheltered classes.
Yes. But we are moving, we're hoping to move to a second co-taught class at the high school level. So, we had one this year, and it was successful. So, we're looking to add an additional one next year.
So, for the administration, as part of the budget process, if you can talk to us about what you're doing to increase that? Because at least from the presentation we've heard today, it seems like the co-taughts really make a huge difference in the process.
Absolutely. They are part of the transformation process.
Great. And the second question I had is on the multicultural Ambassador Club. It sounds like a fantastic program. It seems like it's had a lot of success. Are we only doing that at Discovery? Or are we doing that, I'm sorry, at Bentley? Or are we doing that at other elementary schools as well?
So, this is the first year for the Ambassador Club. So, this is kind of like the pilot, the kickoff year. And we're hoping to spread it out to other schools.
Okay. So, is, I mean, it sounded good. Is, are you seeing the success that you expected it to be?
According to what they've shared and what I know of it, yes. It just started in April.
Okay. And so, is the intention to roll that out to the other elementarys next year?
We're hoping if we can get by and from teachers, that's the plan. So, but these are things, uh-oh, I'm sorry. I'm going to stand over here. So, these are the things that we're able to do, though, when we have the additional supports in the building.
Okay. Thank you very much.
My comment was, thank you for using this as an asset-based model. You mentioned that at the beginning, where we look at being bilingual, multilingual as an advantage, rather than a disadvantage. So, I just applaud you for that mindset, that growth mindset, and just continue the great work.
Thank you.
Member Lazarowitz?
Yeah, the video that we saw a little bit, can you play it back so we can finish the rest of it? I think there was like a minute left.
Was that the first one or the second one?
The first one with the little boy making something? I'm trying to figure out what he was making.
It was the second one.
Oh, so.
Was it buffering?
It was buffering.
Was it? I wanted to see the conclusion of what he did. Is it possible?
Could we get that link sent to us?
We'll follow up with the link.
That'd be great.
All right, perfect.
Yeah, I was wondering also.
I had the same thought.
I wanted to see the music. It was, I think the music was going to be played through, over the radio.
He's trying to record.
FM transmitter.
I can speak too.
Yeah, please.
So, yeah, that, I went to his home, and he was using a coding, no, it was a, like, sort of like a, yeah, it was like a coding kit. And he was putting it together to create a recording device with the radio. So, at the end, he actually recorded his own voice and then played it back.
Now, is that something that the district's provider, or is that his own?
No, that's like a hobby that him and his dad do together.
See, that's, yeah, if it's possible, that would be great. I'd like to.
Yeah, it looked like it was a recording device with an FM transmitter. I'm sorry, AM transmitter. So, he could record and play it back. It was pretty cool.
Yeah, over the radio.
All right, thanks.
Any other questions?
I just got one.
Member Brooks?
Yeah, you didn't have scaffolding on your term, your glossary term. Is there like a quick answer definition of that? Because I haven't heard it in this context before.
So, if you think about a scaffold that you would use to paint, for example, so, it's basically a support system. And so, as we need those supports, we scaffold instruction for our students. And so, that could be, if Kathy's example of her student writing an opinion piece, so she mentioned graphic organizers. She mentioned using sentence starters or sentence stems. Because that student doesn't have the English language right now to be able to complete that task. So, what we're going to do is provide those scaffolds or supports so that he can complete that assignment. As he continues to grow throughout the year, so now, I would expect at this stage in the year, if he had arrived maybe in September, and now it's almost May, that those supports would either probably not be there or they would be lessened. So, that's just a method of supporting instruction.
Is it a different level of support?
Yeah, so you would have to take into consideration the student's English language proficiency and, of course, the tasks that they are being asked to do, and then provide appropriate scaffolds and supports. So, in a classroom, for example, with a variety of English language proficiency levels, we don't just use one scaffold for all. We really need to be individualized.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you.
Member McCoyn?
So, I don't really have a question. I just have a comment. I think this was a great presentation, and I'm really excited about all the great work you are doing with our English learners.
Agreed. Thank you.
I agree with Member McCoyn. Fabulous presentation. I learned a lot. I wanted to tell Courtney that I love the multicultural Ambassador's Club. And I also am amazed at what you are discussing at your meetings, because it's very powerful. So, thank you. Okay, thank you so much. Next on our agenda is communications and marketing. Mr. Brandon.
Mr. Brandon is getting ready. Brandon is getting ready to do the presentation on school start and end times. Just want to just share with the board. This is our first opportunity. I think this is about two and a half years worth of work. So, this is an update this evening about some of the conclusions from the Start-In-Time Committee. We are also going to continue this discussion. So, we've given you this opportunity to have a first look at some of this information. We will continue this discussion at our next board meeting. That is May 14th in a workshop setting. So, I'm going to ask, as you hear a lot of information today, you jot down your questions that you may have. You'll get those questions to President Borinski and I, and we'll get those all in kind of one organized area so that we can have answers for those questions. And those can continue to come to Kate throughout the weeks as we come up to the meeting on the 14th. So, this evening, we'll be receiving information, jotting down your questions, and we'll come back in the next board meeting to answer those questions.
Right. So, all the discussion is to be at our next board meeting. So, as your questions come up, as you think of them, please jot them down. And then, if there's more that come, you know, after this meeting, then jot those down also and send them to me. And Monica and I will compile them all.
Excellent. Good evening. Well, it's a pleasure and privilege to represent the 20-plus members of the School Start and End Times Committee tonight to bring the Board of Education some updates and conclusions from the really 28-plus months of work that has gone into this particular committee. I'd like to take you through kind of a sequence of the history of the committee. We know we have some board members who might not have been board members when we began this work. So, we're going to do kind of a quick snapshot of where the committee's been, talk about where we are now, and certainly present some conclusions and some next steps. We started the beginning of the work of the committee, really which was centered as all the work of the district around the district mission, vision, and belief statements. These are ideas that we always come back to when it comes to any work that we do as a school district. And this work was no different. So, you could see through the district mission, the idea of, you know, developing involved citizens and our students, critical thinking, lifelong skills, all those aspects. This is all just completely intertwined with the work that we did as a committee. All that being said, the committee work began in December of 2016. Very important to develop a real diverse group of stakeholders in PCCS. And diverse, we mean a lot of different areas of diversity, certainly different lenses in the district, making sure that we're getting a very wide-ranging group of perspectives to come to this particular issue. Our stakeholders included parents, teaching staff, union representation, district-level administration, building-level administration, and eventually, students. And so, we felt like this was a very diverse representation of the different perspectives on school start and end times for PCCS. We really want to thank this group. It's very important for the community to understand that this group did this on their own time. They committed lots of time, lots of energy, lots of ideas. Some of our members are here tonight. And we really want to show gratitude to the group. The meetings were honest, thorough, great discussion, creative ideas, great brainstorming, and terrific collaboration. So, we really want to thank the members of the committee for giving their time to this important work. In terms of the guiding principles, the why, really, three ideas generated the beginnings of this particular group. First was parent requests to look at high school start times. Second would be certainly medical research on adolescent sleep patterns and needs for sleep. And some of the longer-term board members could remember some of that work coming to the board, really at the beginning of the work of this committee. And then, research conducted by the committee members on other schools or other districts that have changed start times. So, for the beginning of this committee, eight models were researched and developed by the School Start and End Times Committee. What you have with all of you tonight, and we actually have a few copies for anyone in the community that would like to grab one, is a really important companion piece to tonight's discussion. We're going to kick around a lot of terminology when it comes to models. And we're going to reference these as we go. So, we thought it would be convenient for you to have kind of a packet with a description of the models. So, when we reference these tonight, you can come back to this, since every slide doesn't have this information on it. You'll see kind of a layout of the eight models that were brainstormed. You'll see the specific times and as they compare to our current start and end times laid out. And then, at the end of the packet, you'll see a list of start times for some other surrounding districts that are in the KLA, which is our athletic association. So, this is important to reference as we go. And hopefully, it helps to ease the terminology, just like what the EL team just did, as we go. So, if you hear a certain model referenced and you want to have a quick check of what that model is, that's the intention of this packet right here. These eight models ranged a lot of different creative ideas, a lot of different models of transportation, a lot of different start times, a lot of different end times. The committee really did get creative and innovative in terms of some of the ideas that would be considered. So, once these eight models were developed, and they really were developed based on research, it's important to know that these are researched models. These are based on researching other districts, other schools potentially, and what our surrounding districts are doing. So, these research-based models were developed. And these kind of provided the cornerstone of Phase One of the School Start and End Times Committee. That led to really the next step, which was getting the community's voice. As a committee, we felt it very important to make sure and as quickly as possible and as efficiently as possible, get the voice of the community in terms of the various models that we had come up with. In order to best do that, in December of 2017, we did a full, open, wide-scale survey of the PCCS community, which includes our staff and students, really getting community feedback for three different ideas. And these ideas were researched, but they were also deemed to be cost-neutral. And that's why they were chosen for this particular survey at this particular time. So, on the survey, the models that were surveyed were Model 1, Model 4, and our current model, which is our current start and end times as of December of 2017. Model 1 was to propose a 30-minute later start time for the entire system. So, all three levels would have a 30-minute late start time respectively. Model 4 was to take our levels and reverse the sequence. So, elementary would be first, high school second, and middle school third, with the first start time starting at 8:00 a.m. So, in the survey, these three models were given, presented to the community. And we had very high participation. There's a full report that's available and a link in this presentation. And we also included a link to the board report that we gave in April of 2018. We did partner with K-12 Insight, our reliable survey partner. We thought it was very important to bring in a third party, especially to help with the reporting, to make sure we kept the credibility of the process and have a third party do the reporting. What came back, in one word from K-12 Insight, results were mixed. That was the first word that they used when we first dove into the reporting. So, what you're going to see in the next few charts really just breaks down the rankings of the three models and a weighted score that goes with those rankings. So, if you look at the chart that you see on the screen, the bold number in red in this case is the rankings. So, 3, 2, 1, 1 would be the highest or most favorable from that particular group. 3 would be the lowest favorable from that group. And just as important in parentheses is the weighted score. The intention of the weighted score, which was compiled by K-12 Insight, is to show the range between the three, the three different models. So, a closer weighted score, like you would see, for instance, from the middle school parents, the weighted score of 190 between Model 1 and current model would show a closer, you know, proximity between the preference for those two models. Whereas, you'd see a more distant difference between the high school parents between Model 1 and the current model, 25 points in the weighted score. So, the intention of that weighted score is to show kind of the scale of the preference between the three models. As you'll see in each slide, the results even mix just within the parent groups themselves. So, you can see the preference in this group for elementary parents was current model. Middle school parents and high school parents both agreed that Model 1 was the preference of the three that were presented. We shift to PCCS staff, again, mixed. That's just the common theme that came through in the survey results as we looked. You can see there's some real close, almost, we had one tie, like a dead-even tie in high school staff between Model 1 and the current model. So, that came back very close. But you could see even the separation for middle school staff between current model and Model 4. That's our largest separation in weighted score that we saw between those two models. And for elementary staff, a pretty close scale between Model 4 and current model. So, even just within our staff responses, very mixed results in terms of these three models. PCCS students, of course, we want to get the student voice when it comes to this work. And we really want to thank our students for taking time out of their busy days to take the survey. We had tremendous turnout, just like for our parent group. You can see the numbers of students that responded. Word spread very quickly at the park about this particular survey. And students took great interest in it, as you can see. For the high school, no surprise, Model 1 received the preference from high school students, followed by 2 and 3 in succession when you look at the other two models. Middle school students favored the current model, but you can see it was very, very close between current model and Model 1 when you look at the middle school students. So, mixed results, mixed results, mixed results. That's really the theme that we saw from the survey. Here's just a snapshot of the overall response ranking. If you take all the response groups as a whole, so parents, staff, and students, this is how those three measured out and the relative weighted score with each of those groups as well. Our next slide is a, just a visual for those who just might want to see, a text narrative of each. Again, kind of backing up this idea of a mixed result, what this really spells out in short-sentence form is what each group favored. And if there was a close relationship between number 1 and number 2 that was included here, if it was strongly favored, that's cited in this particular slide as well. Just showing kind of how all over the board our three response groups were when it came to this survey. So, certainly, the committee work was not done at that point. If the survey told us anything, it's that there was more work to be done. And thankfully, we had a committee of really passionate people that were happy to continue with the work into Phase 2, which started in 2018 and continued into this school year. Phase 2, based on the mixed results of the survey, had four real strong goals. One was to look at the pros and cons of each model. So, really look at each model and do a breakdown of the pros and the cons for each. Second was to consider anticipated questions or issues that might come up for each model. Third was really important to look at the financial costs associated with each model. So, to really take the aid and price all of them out. Obviously, a huge range in various financial costs that are associated with these models. And so, that was part of the work for Phase 2. And then, comparisons to surrounding districts as well. And like I said, the last page on your packet shows a snapshot of at least some surrounding districts. districts that are in the KLA Association. The committee also in Phase 2 focused on the possibility for potential new models, and boy, did we have discussion about this. And our committee was amazing at continuing to bring up new and different ideas. No new models really rose to consideration. The finding along the way was that any new models that were discussed usually coincided pretty closely with one of the eight that were already developed. So, it might just be a different take on one of them, but really, the start and end times didn't change because we had already established so many of those in our group of eight. We also looked at if any of the models could be removed from consideration, and as you'll see right now, the committee found three models of the eight to remove from consideration during Phase 2. The first model that was removed from consideration was Model 3. This model made an idea to create two different start times for PCEP, a Schedule A and a Schedule B. There are other districts that have gone with this model. Middle and elementary start times would remain the same, but it would basically get, offer a different start time ability for those who might want to have a Schedule B at PCEP. This was removed from consideration by the committee due to issues of equity and access. It was really determined by the committee that only students who had the ability to provide their own transportation could potentially benefit from this model, and that was seen as inequitable among students and the access to this particular idea. So, that model was removed to consideration for those issues of equity and access. Model 5 was the second of three models to be removed from consideration. This idea was to put high school and middle school start times together and actually remove transportation from high school altogether. Again, an innovative model. Some districts have done this. It was removed from consideration, again, due to issues with equity and access, most importantly, the equity of one's ability to get to school every day. And also, the idea of how removing transportation might affect things like student safety, attendance, enrollment, traffic and parking, all those aspects. As part of this work, we did do some research on how many riders the high school has. We have 2,916 riders, which is close to half of our high school student population who ride. And so, it was determined that this would not be a good model to move forward with due to issues of equity and access and how students are able to get to school every day. The third of three models that were removed from consideration was a model that called for shortening the school day by 30 minutes. There are a variety of ways to do that, whether you look at the front end of the day or the back end of the day, but the idea would be to shorten the day by 30 minutes and then add seven days of the school year to the end of the school year. So, you're essentially making the school year longer by making the school day shorter. That was removed to consideration due to the complications and the cost of adding school days to the calendar. So, we priced out basically the all-in cost for a school day, which is $690,500 approximately, which would make a seven-day total of about $4.8 million to invest in this particular model if you're going to add seven school days to the end of the school year. This also not buried into those costs would be things like annual, additional annual costs for things like fuel and fleet maintenance as per the operations department. This also doesn't account for any potential enrollment losses that might happen due to making a pretty drastic change to a school year calendar that would be different from, you know, some of our surrounding districts and other educational opportunities in our community. And so, all of those things considered, Model 6 was removed from consideration, which was the third of three models removed. So, the models that remained were the five that you see, Models 1, 2, 4, 7, and 8. So, these are the five models that remained for consideration from the school start and end times committee in Phase 2. So, like I said, we dove into the pros and cons for each model, and without going through each one of these one by one, you will see some reoccurring themes when you look at these models. You'll see elements of transportation. You'll see references to zero hour. For those of you who aren't familiar, zero hour is the opportunity for middle school students to take classes at the park, and there's various opportunities for that. So, zero hour would be affected in various ways if you did change start and end times. You'll see elements of activities and athletics. You'll see elements of weather and sunlight, because that's one thing to consider as well when you're talking about what age students might be walking in the dark at given times of the day, so student safety issue on that. And you'll see a reoccurring theme of the effect on our kids' time program, our extended day program, what changes start times might have an impact on that. One thing you'll see regularly too in these slides is the idea of teacher negotiations and the idea of the contract being negotiated, and who'd be it me to discuss that when the union president is sitting right next to me? So, I'm going to ask Heather Colombo to step in and address that right now for a minute or two.
So, I've been able to be on this committee as well as a few teachers who have been a part of those, this work as well, and my lens, when I sit there, is to look at the teacher contract and how might start and end time affect what we have written every day. So, I, what I wanted to start with is reading to you what's currently in our contract. We are currently negotiating, but this is what we currently have. So, currently, high school is not to start before 7:00 a.m. and cannot start later than 7:30. Middle school is to start no earlier than 7:35 and cannot start after 8:05. Elementary school cannot start before 8:15 and cannot start after 9:20. Now, another thing that goes along with those is our continuous work day. So, elementary and high school teachers cannot work more than 455 minutes in a continuous work day, and then, middle school teachers cannot work longer than 435 minutes in their continuous work day. So, currently, some of the models that you've been given kind of go against what our current contract reads, but we are in negotiations, so if you guys go through workshop and talk about different things, there are ways that we can come up with a unified goal, but we just need to know what the board is, final decision is.
Thank you, and definitely want to thank Heather for her role on the committee as well, representing the union, brought great insights, as everybody did on this committee as we worked together. So, going through, again, each model does have its listed pros and cons. For Model 2, obviously, one of the pros is that adolescents, as deemed by the medical representation on the committee as a whole, were starting later in that particular model. You could see that in this particular case, zero hour is a logistical difficulty if you switch high school and middle school and push the system back. Model 4, again, this, you'll see some of the reoccurring themes in a number of the remaining models as we go through them. One interesting idea is there's about 870, according to activities and athletics, about 870 activities and competitions that begin at 4:00 p.m. during the school year, and some of these models would certainly push the system back in a way that would give very little time to prepare for those particular activities or competitions. In some aspects, you might see, again, the idea of sequence having an impact on families. So, which particular level starts first might have an impact on who's there to potentially receive students when they come home. In our current system, high school students would be home first and would have the ability to receive younger students when they're delivered home from school, and if you switch the sequence, it would change that for sure. For Model 7, probably the longest list here in terms of the cons, and that's because it gives a full price-out of this particular model. So, Model 7 is a very important model for this committee. It's two-tier transportation system. So, we're going from a three-tier system, which we have right now, to a two-tier system, which basically means you have two transportation runs instead of three. How do you accomplish that from a transportation perspective? You purchase buses. And the number that we were given for bus purchase was approximately 60 buses would need to be purchased to achieve a two-tier transportation system, about $100,000 each, so 60 times $100,000 gives you a one-time spend of $6 million to purchase the buses. And according to transportation, the work they gave the committee, those buses would last about 10 years before you'd have to make an investment again. The further investment to that, though, would obviously be more drivers, because if you're going to purchase the buses and go to two-tier transportation, you'd have to have more drivers to drive the buses. And the approximate cost for that annually was $1.5 million, and transportation said $1.5 million plus, but that's the number they gave us, and that's based on the terms of the current contract language. But there's also potential costs for, again, additional fleet maintenance. You'd have to expand garages because you'd have to find a place for these 60 buses to be parked and to be maintained, parking expansion, and other operational expenses. So, those are not rolled into the costs as given here under that list. And so, pretty significant financial investment for Model 7 in terms of the two-tier transportation system. And then, Model 8 is not too much different from a previous model discussed. You can see that a lot of the pros and cons in this particular model mirror what we saw earlier for some of the other slides. Of course, we wanted to do the work to look at the current start and end times, and this slide was not updated. We've made a change to this side, yeah. Can I bring that up very quickly? I don't know how that happened.
Please.
Yeah.
I prefer.
Thank you. So, we also did work as a committee, in fact, one of the items we took care of at our last meeting was to look at the current start and end times and do a full analysis of the pros and cons for those particular, the system that we currently operate in. And obviously, we looked at, we'd feedback from medical professionals that were part of the committee about the schedule aligning and how it aligns with adolescent physiology, on the idea of fatigue and how that plays into our current start and end times. And then, the pros really revolving around kind of the simplicity of the logistics of keeping it the same, of the idea of having no change, and that wouldn't affect certain things that right now are unaffected. So, with all that, we thought it was very important to present that work as well to complement the pros and cons list that we did for the other new models, of course. So, as a committee, we were able to present some conclusions to our work. We're going to switch the terminology now in moving forward to, instead of models, we're going to switch the terminology to options. And so, we have options A through D at this point, and that's one conclusion that the committee has drawn, is to actually take the models, and since we've been able to remove some of them and look at pros and cons, we've now consolidated that into four different options, three of which are new, and Option D is no change to the system to keep start and end times the exact same. So, Option A will represent keeping a three-tier transportation system and having a 20-minute later start time. So, this is a modification of Model 1. It does move our start time more in line with other KLA schools, as you can see from the last page of the packet. And so, Option A looks at kind of a modification of Model A. All three levels would move back 20 minutes, both with the start time and the end time. Option B is various forms of creating a two-tier transportation system. So, as reference, this is where we had a significant financial investment. This is for the purchasing of additional buses, as well as the investment in additional drivers, and then, the other costs that we reference. There's lots of different sequences and things you can do within a two-tier system, so Option B would be any form of a two-tier transportation system. Option C would be to keep the three-tier transportation system and push a select level to end at 4:30 p.m. It's kind of a hybrid of Models 4 and 8. Like mentioned before, there's different ways to get there, different sequences that can be looked at, but really, one of the levels would have to end at 4:30 p.m. based on all the different combinations that we looked at as a committee. So, again, a lot of different ways to get there, but Option C would be keep a three-tier system, and some level would end at 4:30 p.m. And remember, that's just the time that school would get out. That does not include time for transportation. So, transportation for students who might be on longer routes, it would add time to that 4:30. That doesn't mean they arrive home at 4:30. That means they get out of school at 4:30. So, important clarification there. And then, Option D of the four options for our terminology moving forward would be no change and keep the current system. Based on that, as Superintendent Merritt mentioned, the next steps would be a board workshop to discuss the conclusions, answer questions, and potentially provide an administrative recommendation for May 28th, and the proposed date for that board workshop is Tuesday, May 14th. I want to thank you so much for your attention, and once again, really want to thank the committee for their hard work and their dedication to this topic, and we appreciate their passion and what they brought to the table.
So, once again, we ask that, I see that many of you are jotting down your questions. If you continue to think about questions, make sure that we get those questions to President Berninski prior to our next meeting. There's been some requests to make sure that we have additional voices at the workshop, so we're inviting representation from our athletic department to answer some questions that may be there. We're inviting representatives from Durham, as well as our transportation, to further discuss some questions that may come from there. If there are other people that you think would be important to bring to that discussion, please let us know that as well. And once again, this is not, I'm going to say, an exhaustive list. This is, there's still, as Mr. Brandon said, still, you imagine the possibilities within, what the committee has done, which I think is great work, and we applaud them, is looking at options that appear to be viable, but still, there are possibilities that maybe even the committee hasn't come across. And so, that is still opportunity for community input, for your questions, and we will reconvene in a workshop setting on the 14th.
Kate, I have some questions about the process for the 14th.
Okay.
So, I just want to make sure that I understand. Are we intending on the 14th to be able to look at all of these options plus anything else, or is it being eliminated to Options A, B, and C?
So, nothing is, I would say, eliminated. So, this is what the committee has concluded as viable options, but once again, any option is still. So, you could very well say we want more information on, you know, these, the options that the committee, you know, going against that, maybe have new information.
Yeah, if someone comes up with a new idea, we can look at that also.
Perfect, and then...
I think we need to respect the work of the committee, though, that they put in a lot of time on these.
Understand. And then, a question from Ms. Colombo. With the teacher contracts, many of these would violate the teacher's start times that are written into the contract, but I don't believe that any of them violate the hours worked provisions, correct?
Right, because what you would do is you would look at what time school started, and then, you would look at their day come second. So, if their school day started at, let's say, 7:20, if it was high school, then you would look at 455 minutes from 7:20, and they could end no later than that, if that makes sense.
Got it.
So, it's two parts.
So, understand, just making sure that I understood that piece.
One piece I don't think that was brought up wasn't the hours or the minutes, but it's the day, so there is one option that would add seven days.
Seven days, yeah.
So, teachers contractually, yeah, 183.5?
186.5 currently, so that one option that was taken off, so Model 6, by shortening the school day by 30 minutes and extend the school year seven days. So, in the law, it's written you have to go so many days and so many minutes, so if you shorten the day by 30 minutes, then you have to make up that time somewhere else, and so, it would be extending seven more whole school days beyond what we already go. So, that would be another portion that we would have to discuss if Model 6 was something that we wanted to look at.
So, if we brought that back for discussion, that's one of the things we also have to be aware of.
That would be another part.
And Heather, I assume you'll be there on the 14th?
I believe so, yes. I think it's a bargaining day, but we'll see.
Okay, it's just, I mean, obviously, it'll be important for that.
Oh, yeah, I'll be, yeah.
I think that when we, when I look, I made a list of all the different functions. I think we've talked about athletics and transportation. We've talked about teacher contracts. I think we may also need some assistance from, from kids' time to make sure that we've got the right people there to help support that process.
That's excellent. And if we, I think it would be important to either have like a synopsis of the medical research or have someone from the medical profession?
Yeah, I think that'd be useful. I think that, at least my hope is, is that we can provide, as a board, the things that we think we'd like to discuss. From my perspective, what I did is I went through this list and identified the cons. From my perspective, what I did is I went through this list and identified the cons, the areas that would be objections to any of these different processes. And I'd like to get that to the administration as quickly as possible so that they can come prepared with solutions on how to mitigate or how to address those issues. Because that'll help us to make decisions on how we can move forward with an option or not next week. Or, I'm sorry, in two weeks.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Yep, so looking forward to getting questions and concerns.
Do you have a, do you have a due date for our questions?
So I wouldn't say due date, all the way up until the fourteenth, realizing that if we get them on the fourteenth, we might not have the answer then, but we would work through that through the workshop with the people that are there. Yes.
I mean, I think it behooves all of us as the board to get those questions into the administration as soon as possible, to give them as much time as possible to give us good suggestions and answers for those questions.
That would be helpful.
Got my list.
Okay, so with that, next on our agenda is Finance and Operations. And Ms. Piaz is not here tonight, but we are discussing Action Item nineteen oh four seventy-four. Consider Approval of Resolution for Bid Package Eighteen. That's the Goals Program Facility Upgrade Project, and it's a final reading. I am looking for a motion on that and then we can do discussion.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of the resolution for bid package number eighteen, Goals Program Facility Upgrade Project Final Reading, Action Item nineteen oh four seventy-four.
Second. The motion was made by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Sidhu. Patrick, did you want to speak to this?
Yeah, this was discussed at the Financial Operations Meeting, and this is really upgrades into the Goals Facility. Rather than moving that into the Tanger Building, they made the option to expand that facility within the existing location. They were able to get a good rate on the, on that expansion from the existing landlord by taking, I believe it's about half of an existing space. And so it really gives them the space that they need to drive that Goals Program, which is part of our ASD program?
No, eighteen to twenty.
Eighteen to twenty-four.
Twenty-six.
Eighteen to twenty-six program, and really help with some of those career activities. This includes both capital improvements in that process as well as furniture upgrades for that group. And we've discussed it in Finance and Operations, as well as previously in board meetings.
So, any questions? Member Lazarowitz?
I just got one question for the contract. Did we figure out how long the contract's for, for this?
You mean the rent?
The rent.
The lease?
The lease.
I thought she said five years.
Yeah, I thought it was five years. I don't have that in front. I don't think we added that contract in here.
Yeah, hold on just a second. I know it was discussed in a previous meeting. I'm trying to see if...
I thought it was five years.
Yeah.
Is that what you remembered, Doug?
Yeah.
Yeah, I believe so as well.
Thank you.
Other questions, concerns? Can you get us the length of the lease?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right. All right, then, we have a motion on the floor. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. And next, we have Action Item nineteen oh four seventy-five. Consider Approval of Resolution to Purchase Career Technical Education, CTE, Lab Equipment. This is also a final reading.
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of resolution to purchase career technical education, CTE, lab equipment. Final reading, Action Item nineteen oh four seventy-five.
I second it.
Motion was made by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Lazarowitz. Did you want to speak to this also, Patrick?
Sure, this was discussed at the last FNO meeting as well as the last board meeting. This is a, I'm sorry, two FNO meetings ago. This is new desktop computers for our CTE and STEM programs. And it really brings them up to the current standards that are necessary to support that process. It helps to support more than eight hundred students that are taking STEM and CTE classes per year.
All right, any questions? Discussion? Okay. All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, next we have two items, two action items that are agreements that we do yearly with other school districts to provide services for our students. So the first is Action Item nineteen oh four seventy-six. Consider Approval of a Resolution for Cooperative Education Program Agreement between Livonia Public Schools and Plymouth Canton Community Schools for the twenty nineteen twenty twenty school year. This is a first reading. First and final reading, sorry. So can I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for Action Item nineteen oh four seventy-six to consider approval of a resolution for a cooperative education program agreement between Livonia Public Schools and Plymouth Canton Community Schools for the twenty nineteen twenty twenty school year. First and final reading. I'm sorry, Action Item nineteen oh four seventy-six.
Second.
Motion was made by Member Lazarowitz and seconded by Member Brooks. Ms. Merritt, did you want to speak to this?
Just as you shared, this is an annual agreement that we hold between, this first one that we're considering is with Livonia Public Schools to provide services for our students. The term of this agreement is one year. There is not an automatic renewal for any period. So each year, as a board, you're asked to consider this renewal. And it provides, once again, incredible opportunities for our students that we're not able to provide. For our students here at the park, they can take classes, CTE classes there in that school district, and we receive their students as well.
Any questions?
How many CTE students do, are taken from, excuse me? How many of our students take classes there? How many of their students take classes here?
Yeah, I don't have that information here, but we can get you that information.
And then, do we just have a prorated sharing of the revenue, or how does it work from a school aid perspective?
In terms of the courses that they take, it's a block course that they take. I think it's a two-hour block. And so that portion of the FTE to support that period which the students are there.
And is it based upon the home district for the students? So for example, Livonia... Okay, so Livonia gets less money from us than we get from them when their students take it to, in our district?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. The next item is Action Item nineteen oh four seventy-seven. Consider Approval of a Resolution for Cooperative Education Program Agreement between Wayne Westland Community Schools and Plymouth Canton Community Schools for the twenty nineteen twenty twenty school year. This is also a first and final reading. Can I have a motion, please?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion to consider approval of a resolution for Cooperative Education Program Agreement between Wayne Westland Community Schools and Plymouth Canton Community Schools for the twenty nineteen dash twenty twenty school year. First and final reading, Action Item nineteen oh four seventy-seven.
I second it.
Motion was made by Member Brooks and seconded by Member Lazarowitz. Would you like to speak to this also?
Same discussion, but this is with Wayne Westland in terms of the William D. Ford Career Technical Center that our students are allowed to participate in the program. One-year agreement. Once again, the agreement doesn't automatically renew.
Monica, just like with Livonia, if you can get us the number of students that are going back and forth between Wayne Westland and us. And I assume that these are courses that we don't offer?
Yes.
Okay.
Any other questions? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion passes seven zero. Okay, next up for discussion is the date of our board meeting for July twenty nineteen. Our calendar, our board calendar ends at the end of June, and so we do not have our meeting set for July yet. Usually, we approve our calendar at that first meeting in July. And so, we are trying to decide if we want to stick with our usual or just for the month of July, because we usually only have one meeting. Do we want to move the meeting to either the sixteenth or the twenty-third instead of July ninth, was it?
Yes.
So the, I have on my calendar that I blocked off for the year, so I make sure that I have them. I have the ninth and the twenty-third. Is that not when we normally meet?
That is when we normally meet.
But we usually only meet once in July.
Usually cancel one of them.
Correct. Correct. So, the question is, do we want to go to the date in between those, or do we want to cancel either the first or the second meeting and stay with the normal second and fourth?
My personal preference is to stay with the twenty-third if we're going to do one meeting in July, not to do something in the off week.
I also would go with the twenty-third, because I probably will not make it to the ninth.
I'll go for the twenty-third, too. Twenty-third is great. Yeah, let's do it.
Does that work for you, Kate?
It doesn't really matter for me. I don't have anything planned. I know the sixteenth is my son's birthday, so...
The sixteen...
Ned.
Do you bring the calendar to which meeting? I'm trying to think of that.
July meeting.
July meeting, and so we'll prove it at that time. Okay.
So I assume that the calendar's roughly going to be the same. We're not talking about any radical changes to it.
No, no, because we, in our bylaws, it does state where the second and fourth.
Thank you.
Except for those months where we have a week of vacation and then it pushes everything back. Did we want to also talk about a date for June for your evaluation?
Yes, you can do that.
We talked about that and it didn't get added. I forgot. So, one other thing that I would like to look at is dates in June to add a meeting for Monica's evaluation. Because if, let's see, it would be a special meeting, so we do not have to do a resolution on it, but it would be good to...
What's our normal meetings?
So, in June, we have the eleventh and the twenty-fifth.
So, just for reference purposes, I will miss the board meeting on the twenty-fifth.
Okay, so, can we look at the week before that possibly? The week of June seventeenth?
Works for me.
Yeah, Tuesday's tough for me that week. I'm traveling.
It doesn't necessarily have to be a Tuesday.
Tuesday. I could do a Monday, but I couldn't do Tuesday on that week. I'm traveling for the rest of that week.
Okay. In case people don't have their calendars here, let's look at that week and we can try and figure out something by email.
Well, I mean, the rest of you are available. That's fine. And I'm just, my availability is Monday, June seventeen.
If we can do the seventeenth, let's just book it.
Yeah.
Save you a lot of emails.
Yeah, I can do the seventeenth.
Seventeenth, okay.
So you can?
I can do the seventeenth.
Okay, great.
So this is going to be labeled special? It's a special?
It'll be a special meeting for Monica's evaluation.
Okay.
And do you have a start time for that?
Uh, not yet.
Okay.
Do we want to discuss that?
Yes. I would rather not wait until seven.
Yeah.
Weekend? Wait, like start at six?
It works for me.
Yeah.
It'd be fine.
Okay, six PM.
Blocking my schedule right now.
Excellent. Okay. Now we are at follow-up board questions. Okay, so, outstanding, we had information on grade point average data on students who participate in activities and clubs. We got that in board notes.
I just had a question. What was the date of the presentation where we talked about that for Athletic? Because I just wanted to compare.
We could find that out.
Yeah, I don't know it off the top of my head.
Because it, I mean, it was great data, but I just, I wanted to be able to compare and contrast. It looked, from what I remember, they were similar, but I wanted to look at that as a comparison.
We should be able to look at the board calendar to see where the presentations are.
Yeah.
I tried looking through my email and couldn't find it.
I think if you look in your Google Drive, it should have the board calendar. That should be a shared document. We can reset that.
Yeah, it just didn't show up in Ash. You just tell me the date, I can pull up the report.
Okay. All right, so we can take that off the list. Custodial to share highs and lows by categories at the next KPI presentation in May. So we haven't had that yet. So we're still waiting. Custodial, the new benchmarks that we're also waiting, right?
I know none of those folks are here tonight, but we need to probably get started on that. I know, I suspect that the twenty-third meeting is going to be tied up with budget. But we're going to be quickly coming into the next KPIs. So whether we do it through FNO or a conversation with...
Use your mic.
Yeah. So, pardon?
Use your mic.
I'm sorry. We just need to, we need to have that conversation with Mr. Peterson, Mr. Piaz, I'm sorry, Ms. Piaz. I will send an email to them. And copy.
Count of individual students who have received at least one referral and the count of individual students who have received at least at least one suspension disaggregated by race and ethnicity.
I believe that we've got that. We got to do some additional analysis on it, but I think we've got it. Is it possible to get that spreadsheet instead of having to recreate it?
Ask the question again.
So we got the data in board notes, but it's a PDF. I wanted to do some calculations on that.
You want to be able to sort it.
And so I wanted to be able to sort it and segment it. So if it's, it looks like it came from a spreadsheet. I assume it did. Is it possible?
I will follow up because I don't know. It just came to me in a PDF.
We can provide that.
Yeah, if it's a spreadsheet, just to make it easier. Otherwise, I'm typing all the data in again.
I haven't answered Treasure Keo's question of, should I, can I answer that right now? February twelve was the date.
Thank you very much.
Okay, so I'm just trying to write down this last thing. From tonight, I have...
Do we not have, is that all you have from the previous list?
I think so.
Didn't we have an open question about the rules around the student counts? I'm sorry, class size. What were the rules around how we determine when is too much? When was too, what was too small? We heard from one of the CTE teachers today that said that it wasn't actually fifteen, it's actually two classes combined. But there were other classes that were there that were, you know, seventeen or eighteen students.
Were we determined as a threshold?
Yes, we had talked about, there was a discussion on...
Yeah, I remember that, too. I'm sorry, I didn't capture it, I guess.
If I remember correctly, the gist of it was to understand what are our maximums that we determine before we open another section for a particular class or we stop accepting students into them? Because we saw classes that, on average, were meeting our things, but we saw classes with, that were well over our recommendations. And in some cases, we saw situations where those student counts were enough where it would seem to warrant adding another class, but there wasn't another class created. would seem to warrant adding another class, but there wasn't another class created for them. They were running at 35 or 36 students across five or six sections. So to understand both at the high level, and then also at the low level, when we, what are the exceptions that we make to allow certain classes to be run with a lower number? There was a great explanation this evening, that it's not actually a class that's being run with a lower number, it's actually two classes that are run at the same time. So understanding those, how those things work across that process would help us.
Yes. We get that information, I think we just didn't have that captured.
Okay.
You have that one?
I'm sorry.
I can go, I can go through the whole list I have for tonight. So this is what I have, correct me if I forgot something. The length of the lease for the Goals Program. The number of students in our cooperative agreements with other districts.
And the number of their students that come to see us.
Both, yes, both ways, yep. The spreadsheet on the desk, for the discipline data that we got.
Yeah, just so I don't have to type it in.
Yeah.
Because I'm lazy.
And then the max and min's for class sizes.
Yes.
Okay, anything else? Okay, all right, I'm at adjournment. Would anyone like to make a motion?
Madam President, I'd like to make a motion for adjournment of the meeting.
Motion was made by Member Lazarowitz, seconded by Members Siedu. Any discussion? Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes 7-0, we are now adjourned.